Okay, it's a model that's all just being ordered. Um, but we please stand with the flag of America.
The reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with a reason and justice for all.
Okay, I have to welcome all the visitors and be a representative and maybe have some of your students. Yeah, yourself? Okay, before we get started, I'm going to read the little rule down here. And it says, uh, members of the audience may address the board at this time with any items of interest or concern. Prior to speaking, a public comment card that you filled out must be completed and given to the superintendent, board secretary, or board president. Please begin by clearly stating your name for the board. You will be limited to five minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion and allow others an opportunity to speak. We ask that you remember that the Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific students or specific employees or their job performance. Thank you for your support of our school district. So what that means is you can't name names, you can't talk about programs, but you can't talk about them anymore. Okay, uh, first, Martha Marsl.
Oh, good, they're getting me right away.
You asked.
Yes.
Uh, my name is Martha Marsl and I'm a K-12 senior librarian for the district. And I would like to address the possibility of a budget reduction of the part-time media work at Hawthorne. And I prepared a little information that I will pass out to you or pass it out now or later, which I hope is okay. Uh, we have one and a half library clerks at Hawthorne and they're very busy. Um, every teacher in this school goes to the library every single day with their class. So the first piece of information that you have is the weather schedules for Hawthorne um, with those teachers. Uh, they go for fifteen minutes and at that time usually they bring their backpacks in before and then check out two books if they brought their two books back. They only got one book back, they can only check out one or whatever. So, um, I went through clerks, I just wrote down, looked up the numbers every all of those classes that are on here. So that's about five hundred twenty-eight students a day that go through the Hawthorne library. And then if they all checked out two books, that would be over a thousand books every day. So that's twenty-five classes every day that go through there and they are very busy with those. And I also passed the two clerks to, I think the second page is just a circulation report that I printed out today for you that showed, uh, today four hundred forty-five books were checked out at their library, uh, this month, two thousand one hundred thirty-three. And then, uh, I did ask the clerks to write down everything that they do so that I can share that with you, um, besides just checking books in and out. And just checking the books in and out, uh, is very busy and they also shelve all those books. So they're checking books in, checking them out, shelling books all day. And the first, I've just been there a couple of years, the first time I went I was on the factory, uh, factory line, so busy and there's so many, so many students. So, uh, the full-time clerk has, is the first page here, she's written down, but her duties are, um, besides checking out, check for damaged books, then if they are damaged, she has to assess a find, uh, put it into the computer, take that information to the office, um, deliver ADA materials, she has current backup duty collecting book finds, and then on Wednesdays, uh, which is our DLC day and not that class is coming to the library on those days, some of the things that they do are they print out the overdue, they're applying notices, they compare books. They assess the collection for me if there are missing books and let me know what books I need to buy. So there's a lot of library-related tasks on that day that they do that keeps the running, library running smoothly that we could, you know, don't see as far as the checking and check-out. Uh, the last paragraph there, she, she did say there's been days when the part-time position was not at work and there was no sub and on those days I usually don't get breaks or lunch. And I know that I, she's called me probably at least half a dozen times and said they didn't get a sub for the part-time collecting and the overdue, which I'm happy to do, but I can't always do that if I'm in another school or if I have a class or something like that. So I do think it would be, I would like to ask people to consider not cutting that decision. I think it's going to be a hardship on that school as far as the way they are running it now for one person to be able to cover everything that one and a half of. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, I have Sharon Stae.
Hi, I'm sorry. I'm trying to say that being a part of the school system and athletic program for lots of years, we've had our ups and downs throughout. But each program continues to press. I believe this basketball program has its downs. It's going through a trial period and I believe that it's just pressing through and I believe that each one, uh, student, each one that, uh, let me see, that stands behind this school system and this program would like to see the program have a chance for the present uh, heads up. I believe that they deserve an opportunity as far as others who have been passed. And, um, we just look forward to a great year, which I know that, um, we all love to see it, we all love, uh, it's hard, we have team pride and team spirit, that's not always be, I believe that it's part, um, part of this passion, it's considered, in this circumstance, it's a, I believe, angels, not just the program itself that everybody has involved, but it's not just the program, there are people, children, those fans, all of them, all, to better, to more possibilities.
Thank you. Deanna James?
I can write this down because I just found out about your rules and I get carried away sometimes. A little over a week ago, I spoke to a couple of you about our varsity basketball program. I was shocked at what I heard. It takes time to develop a program, especially when you are going through the transition of losing some very good senior players last year. I was told there hadn't been very many positive comments about the varsity basketball program and maybe one individual in particular. So on that Sunday, I got on the phone with some friends that are also supporters of this worthy cause and we found you a lot of supporters. I believe the decision can never be made unless both sides of the picture are considered. I do not believe that this has been the case here up to now, or at least not a week ago. Since last Friday, we have over seven hundred signatures for our petition, over six hundred likes and followers to our page and countless letters speaking about their personal experiences and in support of our varsity basketball program and the individuals who currently run it. Those numbers may not sound like a lot to you, but those numbers are more than five percent of the population here in Keahuck and rising. And these numbers are far, far greater than any complaints that you may have received. We ask that you consider the entire picture, not just one side. We ask that you consider the youth here in Keahuck and that they need more than just teachers, coaches, and faculty to show up in their schools. They need mentors and somebody who can connect with them and this leader has. We hope our message is then received loud and clear and thank you for your time.
And Mackenzie Slager?
Uh, Mackenzie Slager, I have four kids in the school district, two of which are in high school, because I'm in state study. Can you guys think back to your school days and remember a person that made a huge impact or not? I can. I was really lucky because for me, I have one in elementary, I have one in middle school, and I had an awesome one in high school. Each one of these people impacted my life greatly and I'm still to do to this day. Me as a school district is very lucky to have life changers in our school. People who invest in our students, people who motivate our kids, people who show them the guidance, people who take a chance on a student to be a part of a team in a sport that student means nothing about. When the life changers at our school do these things, they give kids more confidence, they build up their self-esteem, they teach them hard work, and they show them what they're worth. It takes a village, as they say, to raise a child. The village I want to help me raise my kids and love on my kids has life changers in it. And there's a lot of life changers in this basketball program. So I would hope that you guys would consider to keep letting that basketball program and the people involved in it be those life changers for all of our kids. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the approval of consent of agenda. Intertain motion to approve the agenda. Do you have any discussion?
It was Kim and.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, uh, approval of the minutes of the motion. Discussion.
Yeah, there's one G for the last week, uh, that was, um, March thirteenth, uh, it was March, and then you can, so they need to be directed.
Just in so many places at that time, I guess.
It was on the thirteen, twelfth of March here.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor of the, or no, we have to amend, amend the minutes. All in favor of accepting the minutes with that amendment? Say aye. All right, approval of accounts payable. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Some move.
All right, any discussion? Anybody have any questions?
We met the other day on the boardroom, we had a few questions which I can send the answer and then we also got an update tonight, everybody, and took a quick look at those and they were all standard operating procedure.
Any questions, aye? All right, if not, uh, all in favor of approving? All right, approval of the monthly financials. And a motion?
Some move.
All right, any discussion?
Same question.
Yeah, we, Deb and Heidi might want to answer, we're in pretty good shape if she had a few things that might be, might be coming up or we get back into our standards, but through fiscal management, it looks like we're percent, two percent better after we've dealt with all of that. Is that flattering?
That's right.
So those questions were answered also.
Any other questions? All in favor of accepting the monthly financials, say aye. Any opposed? All right, recognition of favorite part.
So I'm here on behalf of the KEA and every year they select a teacher to be the teacher of the year. And so this current year, they select Lana Proctor as our teacher of the year. So here are some thoughts as our new teacher of the year, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Um, from some of her nomination forms, they said she is a very dedicated individual who goes above and beyond, so each child has a chance to shine. She is always open to new ideas and is extremely supportive of the fellow teachers. Her efforts with every single student is greatly appreciated by everyone in your building, including the students. You spend a lot of time assessing each student to identify what their unique and talent they have, uh, for each and every single child, which I think is amazing. She works very diligently to teach many concepts and skills in the area of music and also social skills and how to be a better citizen so that you make the world a better place. And lastly, she is a very dedicated professional who is always doing her best to serve the needs of students in Keahuck Community School District. So congratulations Lana Proctor.
Busy time of year, so these are the two of our girls state bowlers that we have, where all the rest of our kids are just playing in other sports today, so hopefully, I think we'll talk to Jason, maybe next month we can get the rest up here for recognition. But we have Lincoln Burkhammer, this is her first year, she's a freshman at KHHS. And then we have Caitlin Moore, who is a senior and was the individual state champion. And as a team, the two of them were on a team that finished fourth place at state this year, so. And then also, I just kind of reminded, because I had to throw some of this other side stuff off the way, um, Caitlin was also mentioned as Southeast Bowler of the Year for the Hawkeye and she is one of the three, here for, one of the three finalists for the Des Moines Register Bowler of the Year, which that will be announced June twenty-fourth in Des Moines at Iowa Event Center. And, uh, where they get all the athletes from all the sports, football, basketball, bowling, swimming, softball, baseball, they do one big gala there together in Des Moines and this is the second year now that they've done this award, so, um, but two of our bowlers, hopefully we can get the rest up here next month, but thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, on to announcements, George Washington and Florence.
I'm ready. At Florence, they have been really busy, um, a lot of people come in and out. Um, Mr. Brandonberg, who lives at Keahuck Tourism Bureau, he came in and talked about Keahuck geodes with the kids. Um, they all got to take their own geodes home and contract them for them, they've never seen the geodes, they're really excited about that. Um, Sarah Weitzler, I lost Sarah here. Um, and Lisa Strata, they took, um, they walked over to the kitchen and, um, saw where they were excited to see where their lunches are going to be made next year, it's a big deal for preschoolers. Um, they are participating in the Earth Day, it's coming up April twenty-first. Um, and then we have scheduled our high school visit, more preparation for kindergarten, they're going over on May ninth. Um, and there are some teachers are continuing their network classes in Fairfield, they go to PD in Fairfield to meet up with other preschool teachers and bring neat ideas back for that. Um, and George Washington, I don't know if you've seen, um, on Facebook, the Lee County Conservation, we planted tulips, the tulips are blooming, so it's really nice, so they're driving by and, um, you gotta see it, the kids are really loving seeing all their hard work. I still don't know if we made it.
They still haven't heard yet.
No, they haven't heard yet and I don't know if they, I don't know what they do with that, but hopefully we've done it, but they look really nice. Um, Battle of the Books was today, I don't know if Martha was still, Martha took them and Mrs. Burner took them. Um, we had teams go through all schools and no one placed correctly, but I know they were complimented on how well, um, they worked, they worked really hard. Um, we just finished Iowa assessments, we had our kickoff March thirty-first, um, and this year's theme was at TW was I Believe in My Selfie. And we had a skip and a kickoff assembly, um, March thirty-first. Last week we tested and I'm happy to say though, all of our testing and makeups were done by Friday. We are done, except for turning them in. Um, they got, um, little bookmarks and bracelets and we're going to celebrate at the end of the month by going to the Edge and they get to bring their electronics, which is a big deal for them. At the end of the year, we're still working hard though, we have our math assessments and our class assessments coming up. Um, this week we have artists in residence, um, Jay Scott is coming in and doing the photography and then we have another one next week, Becky Butler, um, but I'm not sure if it's an art, an artist, so I don't know which, uh, what medium she's going to bring in. We have Opera Iowa coming up at the end of the month and, um, third graders, we've scheduled our incoming fourth graders, we're excited to have them come May eighth. And we are having our first ever, um, parent night for incoming, or incoming fourth graders and that will be the night of May eighth too, so we're excited to offer that. To wind up the year, we'll have our fifth grade track meet before the next board meeting and our fourth grade is in progress.
I would say, I'd say, I watched that skip on Facebook, that was me. The kids, I'm sure they got to.
Um, a couple things, uh, I'll be short this week here. First off, as Nicole said, we did, uh, finish up Iowa assessments last week. Um, students were working hard, I think as of tomorrow, we have one group left, assuming there's no absences, we should have them all completed by tomorrow. Um, did want to share some data with you, uh, as you know, we've been, uh, working with our press materials, uh, we started doing press interventions a while back. Um, and we just had a few teachers kind of volunteer, um, start working with them, start planning the materials, get accustomed to it. Um, we had a few teachers from each grade level and then we had one whole entire grade level who was participating in that. And so we started looking at, um, some of the ten-day classified interventions that that one particular, the one particular grade level was doing, um, and started seeing some good results. Um, initially, um, we started seeing jumps in our accuracy, one of our ADA consultants last year said you gotta clean up before you speed up. So we were cleaning up that accuracy quite a bit. Um, and just looking at some of our groups, our group that is just above, that were just above the winter benchmark, their accuracy, and mind you, this is ten days, their, their accuracy went from ninety-three percent to ninety-seven percent. Um, and their words per minute, uh, went from forty-six from a winner, from a winner screening to at the end of that ten-day intervention, they were at seventy-six. Now, that's not all entirely in that ten days, but I mean, this is some good growth in just ten days of having that targeted intervention. Um, that was our group that was just above the benchmark. Our group that was, uh, one of our groups that was just below, um, so accuracy went from ninety-three point nine to ninety-five, not such a huge jump, uh, but their words per minute went from forty-four to fifty, um, again, in ten days. And then our lowest, our, our lowest group there, um, their accuracy went from seventy-eight to eighty-five and their words per minute went from twenty-two to twenty-nine in just ten days. So, um, seeing some good results from that, so that's definitely some stuff we're going to share with our staff. We have, um, Katie Mashup coming in, coming in on Wednesday to start introducing a full staff. We have a couple more, um, I think it's May, oh, I think it's May third and then May seventeenth, we'll have two more follow-ups or even three mini introductory trainings with the full staff and then set them off in the summer and come back and fall into the training with that, um, back just two minutes before we gave the breakdown for that. What is the first group you said that they had for ten days? How many staff were training in that? This, this is, so all those numbers I just gave were just for one of our grade levels. And so. Six, six that grade level. Every teacher at that grade level gave the same intervention for the whole class. And so we broke down the students in the groups, basically how to score. Special ed teachers helped with that or anybody else? Nope, this is just classroom teachers. Then can the associates or train the backup just? Okay, nope.
And how long was this intervention?
This, this classified one was just ten days.
One, three, two, seven, per day?
Per day. Per day, um, this one, I think this was about, I don't know, I want to say fifteen to twenty-five.
Per day or a week?
Per day. Per day for the whole class.
So it's a whole group intervention?
It's a whole classroom, whole classroom. So what that will do is hopefully sift out some students who are still, it's targeted intervention, so what it will hopefully do is sift out those students who are still struggling so that we can individualize their instruction from their, their intervention program. So, like I said, seems like good results so far.
When do you take the spring fast, when is?
First, first week in May.
First week in May. Are you taking all of them the first week in May?
Well, the, the math and fast are the first week in May, the first two weeks within May. And the fast window is a longer window, but that's when they will begin.
Um, some upcoming things that we're looking forward to, we have staff appreciation coming up, um, these next couple of weeks, a lot of people that tend to recognize and are for their, for their job with us, we've got some fun things planned out for them. Um, on May tenth, we're going to have our title night, which will be from two thirty to four thirty. Um, and kind of like we, kind of the same format we use for our PPIs kickoff beginning of the year, we're going to have some stations that the kids have to go around, some of that will be fun stuff, some of that will be educational stuff, it's all tied with the R C. So I know there's going to be some bounce houses, some fun activities, some people coming in from the community, um, so that should be a fun one on May tenth from two thirty to four thirty. And then our third grade is going to be doing STEM week, um, they asked if they could do a week in May devoted entirely to science and technology, um, so yeah, absolutely. And so they're gonna, they're getting some projects together for the kids in May, um, and we're looking forward to that. Uh, as they said, we had Iowa stuff, because last week we're still finishing up with a few makeups there. Um, middle school track, boys and girls are both underway, uh, they're away tonight, the girls are at Washington, boys are, boys are both, boys and girls are at Washington. Right. So, um, I don't know what we're changing this to, I'll let you. We had some National History Day successes that I wanted, uh, read to you, this is from this headler. Uh, following seventh grade girls advanced their website about the Underground Railroad and appeared, uh, toughened in the National History Day State Competition, these are seventh graders Abby Walter, Kaylee Watson, Kate Zolovski, and Alena Sargent, uh, so congratulations to them. Um, and then our PE is implementing a new unit which is going to be roller skating, something new that we haven't done before. And I think that's kind of neat to mention, uh, that they're branching out, that'll be starting April twenty-fourth through May fifth. Uh, and then you have fundraising that you're going to talk about tomorrow. The pickup for fundraising tomorrow, for anybody purchasing anything from a KMS student for fundraising, that pickup is tomorrow, Tuesday, April eleventh from three to six PM in the middle school cafeteria. And I won't step on his toes, but you guys will know the things there. I think that the dollars are a backup truck for the school.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to say if anybody purchases.
We, we have, we have. I don't know about them, with that amount of stuff, I think she sold a hundred and twenty items and we're looking to see if that's a new company record that we, you know, go on. Yes, all, all that will be delivered tomorrow and, uh, we're sending alert messages by one one on six o'clock tonight, on tomorrow, reminding, um, that the parents will come pick everything up and then they, the youngster who sold them will be responsible for the delivery.
Did they sell enough to get on the noise?
Uh, I think that was per person and we had several kids, I don't know, I haven't had plenty, several kids that they sold over thirty items, so. Yeah. Yeah, so I, I'm sure that's part of the. And we'll kick in if there's any difference to help with. But also, over seventeen thousand dollars of products were sold, which forty percent that comes back to our activities fund, um, which is about six thousand eight hundred dollars, so, uh, we've got, uh, now last, last year one thing was the whole school got participating in a glass, they find out part, but they made very clear this year, only the kids who sold ten or more items would be allowed to do that, so we've got about seventy kids who will be participating in that on the last day of school. But, uh, again, great success and then nice to anybody who was out there purchasing for KMS. I heard Nicole talk about Battle of the Books. We had a team of four girls go from school to day. And I'm confident that they came back to the door and had smiles on their face and said, "How'd you do?" They said, "Not really well, fuck." And again, the focus there was just that they didn't put in lots of time, lots of effort, working with Martha, and then went on this journey and put themselves out there quite a bit. So we're pretty happy that they were willing to do that as well, so.
Martha, back there, do you have anything else you want to add, Martha?
Well, I think it was a really good experience for all of them, and I think it encouraged reading. They've read a lot of good books, even though they didn't get into the final four. And we also have a high school team who went last year, and they're going to be participating later this month.
What is Battle of the Books?
Like they advanced to the state.
Yeah. They have a list of 30 books to read, which is a lot of books. And some of my older kids have said, "Oh, those elementary kids, if they're just easy books." No, they're, they're chapter books, and they're, you know, significant books. And they're all award winners, like Iowa Children's Choice, Iowa Teen Award, a high school award. So they had to read 30 books and answer questions on that and work together as a team to answer questions.
Yeah, State Science Fair was two weeks ago, this Friday, I believe. Michelle, are you going to mention to me the students there, State Science Fair?
We had Eastern Iowa Science Fair, which is the regional event, which was mid-March. And then we just had State Science Fair, which was the end of March. Let's see, middle school, I think we had 27 kids that went from the middle school to the Eastern Island. And we had 21 that went on to state, just scheduling conflicts or going on breaks or surgeries at that point. Our middle school did really, really well. We had four students place at Eastern, or at State Science Fair. So it's competing, every single middle schooler in their category, which was wonderful. And then also at Eastern Island, we had three or four teams go up on stage for getting some items. And then high school, we had several kids place at Eastern, and we have one making it on to finals, which means you're in the top eight of hopefully going on to International Science Fair. So we have students really, really well there. And then I think we had five, five different students that placed at high school up at State Science Fair names.
So our goal, one of our goals in most of the service is to get every kid involved in at least one name other than sitting in the classroom. And so I'll be able to report back once we're over how that looked. Because again, it shouldn't just be about going to school. It should be about being involved in school. It should be more understood, so. Science fairs, Battle of the Books, sports, all that are part of the band and the music that we do as well. To finish up real quick, our KMS PTO is very, very busy. I love sending out many of this group of people. It's a small group, and they're very dedicated to doing great things for our kids. Some of the little things they do is, you know, starting that you're going to provide backpackful supplies for anybody new to KIACA who registers at the middle school and comes in. So just kind of nice welcome gift to the foundation that you know that they've done. So currently, what they're working on is they have two trackings coming up. Our boys will be at home on the 18th. PTO is going to be grilling out for that, that night. So IV is going to provide the supplies, and for $4, you can get a hamburger or a pork loin. So as well as PTO is going to be working concession stands, so. And we've got, I want to say, almost 40 boys running this year, so it should be an exciting, big track meet coming up on the 18th. And then versus the 28th, our girls will be at home, and PTO again is going to be selling hamburgers and pork limes and running the concession stand. If anybody would like to help out with using timers and things like that, yes, or just give us a call at school. If you're willing to hit that blender, help us out, help out with kids. April 29th, there's a trivia night coming up at the South Side Boat Club. And the fund, the PTO is going to provide the food for that, and the funds that come from that will go back to our KMS PTO. And one of the big priorities we've been working on is something that the KMS staff has been involved in before, called the Showcase of Excellence, where all the electives teachers will be having student products showing off. Arts, industrial arts, PE, and we're going to have the jazz guy playing that night. So the idea there was to get the parents and kids in the bunch to show off what they've done. But we're going to add one little feature to it. We're going to send out flyers to all the fifth-grade families. And if they didn't commit to an open house, and the plan is to have our student council give them tours, and get some other students who can be placed in strategic places, and then quickly talk to kids about what we expect to responsibility and expect, expect KMS. So again, PTO is doing a lot of help with the planning that, as well, and we're going to offer some food for that as well, to provide people with food for that. Showcase of Excellence that night, so the high schools got, I think it's the band choir or choir one of the nights. So or feed them, they can see that they'll feed them. That's right, yeah? How we doing?
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, so we just finished up with Iowa assessments, as everyone else did. We have a few finishing up, a few groups this week that were asked, asked, we've been finishing up. But one thing we decided to do was have an incentive. And so the incentive is a pool party at the KIACA High School, the first week of June. And hopefully, we'll have your votes back by then and be able to tell the students who have either maintained proficiency or gained proficiency or shown growth, will be able to send them an invite mail, and with their invitation, they'll be able to come to the pool party.
We had the first week of June, kind of a night, a cool party, maybe have pizza and stuff for the kids. It wanted to be something different this year, something fun outside the box. Can't really fit it into May because of the weather, but it should be good.
Tom is coming up on the 22nd of April. That will be at Myers Field, followed by the post-Tom or after-Tom at my field house. And it sounds like we have a pool of playables and games and activities for the students to do after that. Also, on the 28th of April, will be the Student Council Blood Drive. So if you are able to make it for that and want to donate, we would welcome that. Also, we have big congratulations going on with our KIACA High School Lady Chiefs Track and Field Team. They've been doing super this year. They've won the championship at Columbus and also this last Friday at Central Lake. We also have two state-ranked runners right now, Yamaia Ellis-Primes and Lilia Tate, which is fantastic. They've been working really, really hard and doing so. Also, we've had National History Day winners just this last week. It's been a group documentary category, Drakey and Tristan Grisham on that. And the group exhibit was Callan Houston, Barry Anklund, and Kendall Watson. And the group website went to Austin Durphilipson, that, Dave Jones and Alex Walter. So really, I'll come for them to go there and compete and come away as winners.
Madison Benson got first place in State Iowa Reading Council. She did a short story called "The Most Favorite Day," so we're very proud of her. We also had five YLT students attend the Union Leadership Class at Central Campus in Des Moines. It was a nice experience. Got an email on it. We're able to make it happen. Drive-a-thon, we made $4,600 with the drive-a-thon. I think our target was a little higher, Jason, but it was kind of a rainy day, and we advertised as much as we can. We got some ideas to do it even better next year. But special shout-out to Lincoln for doing that for us. I mean, that's an amazing fundraiser. And last but not least, a pretty awesome announcement. I have Southeast Iowa Regional STEM Scaling Grant. We were awarded that this year. So Mr. May and Courtney Gazelle are going to teach Engineering the Future class next year at the high school. And we, they've been training to do it, and they're going to team up and co-teach it. So it's going to be a nice little avenue for Engineering the Future and pool class for our high school. So proud of them for getting that grant. All right, thank you. I'm going to try to be quick.
I'm Kate Tuck back here, so I'm not going to climb and fall and praise her. Yes, we are excited. The Iowa assessments have come to a rounding end and closing. A couple of schools, as you heard, are finishing up, and overall, great turnout rates. We appreciate all of our students, their focus on the Iowa assessments this past week. If you haven't completed, focus. Let's see. We had several of our principals and instructional coaches had focused on instruction in Des Moines this past week. I believe Brad, who was there, Mr. Moplosky, and Adam was there with us, along with several of our instructional coaches. So it was a really good conference. I mean, we had some great conversations coming back. In fact, still texting about things that we're looking forward to, report to the bottom of the district instruction, the district strategic plan. Much of what we discussed and learned, we're like, there it is, you know, putting the pieces in place. We had a great meeting last week. Looking forward to our meeting coming up again. And also, we'll be bringing in a Great Prairie ADA Special Education Regional Director and Director to assist in some of the work as well. So it is all coming together. Shout-out also to Torrance Preschool. They also received the STEM's PRAC grant. And at GW, George Washington received the Elementary and Engineering Grant. So a couple of other pieces to highlight that level of, so to be a shout-out. That's it. Thank you.
All right, on to the reports.
I'm Amy Johnson. I'm in my fourth year here at the high school. Fourth year, I'm engaged, so I'll report here. This year, we haven't done too much different than the rest. Same types of, we've always had a lot of kids like that. This stuff, this kind of summer, this Kendall thing.
I'm Brad. I'm a PIV, pretty far on, also the SRO for some different things. And most of the stuff we're dealing with really hasn't changed from last year. Pretty much the same, we're getting, if I could be disorderly, kind of, things like that. One of the good things is we can get the numbers from last year to this year. On my side, I don't think they have improved, so that is a plus. I think it's kind of, kind of helps with the administration we have. I think with us all working together, we'll work the things out, make a big difference. Other than that, it's been, been pretty good. So that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Angela Scholl. I teach at middle school. This is the end of my 15th year. I started out in the sixth grade, sixth grade team. And I currently work with the upper, seventh, eighth graders, co-teaching science and math to those students. I'm here to talk to you about our collaborative time at the middle school, kind of explaining to you what it is, and also talked about our multi-tiered systems of support, which we are piloting this year. This is the first year we were able to work a schedule so that every student at the middle school has that intervention time in the middle of the day. Every teacher is available during that time, so electives, core teachers. I think Mr. Boebert has a group sometimes, and if we need extra hands, Mr. Henderson, Mr. Moplosky, and Ms. Whitaker, our guidance counselor, have also offered to take a group. So we have smaller groups and they are able to do interventions. The district mission on, they're all aware of that. The next one is the middle school mission statement, which is KMS provides a positive culture and learning environment that empowers personal success. In order to fulfill our mission, and this is both district and school, we have to ensure high levels of learning for all students. We have to understand that not every teacher, no, no single teacher has the time, knowledge, skills to meet the needs of every single student. So by building in our MTSS time, we have multi-talented teachers in all areas who are working with the students. And if we have some that have a strength in math, even if they're not a math teacher, they can work with our students on math, if they're not a reading teacher, but they have a strength in math, they can work on reading. So we have a lot of people giving their effort to try to get those students where they need to be. We also, in addition to interventions, we also do extensions for those students who have the skills they need and need some activities to further their knowledge. Talk to you about collaborative time, but our collaborative time in the schedule dates back, as far as I know, to 2011, when the district started sending teams of teachers to PLC training, or professional learning communities training. Well over $100,000 have been spent by the district for the training, for collaborative time, professional learning communities, and that multi-tiered systems of support so that we can best serve the students. In order to make the time effective, we have to determine what we want the students to learn, what do we expect them to learn, how will we know when they're learning it, how will we respond when they don't learn it? That's where the MTSS piece comes in. If they're not learning, we have kind of specific interventions that we do on specific scales for those students. And then the extensions come in, how do we respond when they've already learned it? These are the four curricular questions of a professional learning community. These are the four critical questions of a professional learning community that most of the district, with the exception of maybe some new teachers, has been trained in.
And I wanted to talk about this slide real quick. This is really what our teams of teachers are working for. Making sure they're being clear on what student expectations, the very top level clarity of lesson goals. What are they teaching? How is it tied to standards? And what standards is it tied to making that clear to students? It's hard to see it in the box. But really, the three main bubbles come together to hit the impact sweet spot. And according to John Hattie, some of you have seen it in my Friday feedbacks and some of the other things I've referenced, a huge potential for student growth, much beyond a year's growth when our teachers put their collective efforts together during that collaborative time and PLC time to monitor student growth. And if you see in the bottom right-hand corner, there's a little meter there. There's an arrow that points to point four. Point four, according to John, who's done all this research, is the tipping point where you'll get a year's growth and beyond is the goal for a lot of our kids who are behind. So, when all those things come together, which is what our teams work on, you hit that impact sweet spot, and that's what we're really trying to focus on. And once we hit it, we're going to try to recreate it over and over and over again. So, as Ms. Scholl mentioned, right now really is our pilot year of our multi-tiered systems of support, our MTSS time, where all students have access to it now and all staff are available. So, we're really going to, we're excited to see the growth that our kids are going to make by continuing to be better from all the stuff we're learning in the PLC institutes.
Collaborative time is important. We spend a lot of time analyzing data in order to group the students into groups so that if we have ten students who need a targeted intervention on using context clues to decode work, figure out what they need, we can put those groups into smaller groups to work with one specific teacher on that specific skill. So, we spend a lot of time analyzing data to determine the interventions that are needed and working with our reading and language arts people to know that we are doing what's right for the students to learn those skills. We create those interventions to improve the student's skill level. We do a lot of discussion on instructional strategies, cross-curricular unit planning, developing plans to meet student needs, collaborating with the instructional coach. Without that time, that would have been very difficult this year to get the time that we needed with Mr. Bogart. Meeting with the at-risk team, guidance counselors, AEA staff and parents about student concerns, and planning incentives to support student success. This is a very limited list. When I shared this presentation with you, the title works of the teams at KMS use collaborative time. It's a more extensive list, not a complete list, but it's a more extensive list that's broken down into specifics of what the sixth grade team, seventh grade team, and eighth grade team have been doing during our collaborative time. If you click on that link then and see that list. The seven keys to collaborative time. Is this me and Mr. Bogart or was this you?
Still you.
The focus is on learning in everything that we do. And we are no longer, as teachers, what they used to call "simultans", where you go to your classroom and you shut the door and it's my kids, and I work with my kids, and I do everything with my kids. It's not like that anymore. It's our kids. I work with the at-risk students during the core classes, but while I have an MTSS class, I have a whole other group of kids that may include some of my own students that I have in the classes. But it also includes other students from the eighth grade team and the seventh grade team. So, it's, we are using every person that's available to have contact with those skid kids. This is made possible by a priority that our staff made it a priority when they started our PLC training to have that scheduled time into the day for collaboration and the scheduled time into the day for that MTSS period for all students. No students left out of that. Used to be that when we tried to work that out, band students were included or choir students were included. Now, everybody's included in that time. The focus, it focuses the team on those critical questions. What do we want students to learn? How will we know they're learning? What we do when they don't learn? And what will we do when they have already learned it? Makes products of the collaboration explicit. We know exactly what we have to do, and then we work on how we're going to get it done. We've also established team norms that we follow, just like meeting norms in business and the school board follows. We pursue specific and measurable team performances. I know several of the teams, I'm not sure if all of them do, their professional development plan is based on a goal that their team sets. Some of those teachers work as a PLC on their PD plans, but some of them are working as a team to improve student achievement scores. And it also provides us with evidence of what's working and what's not. We did see some evidence, I think, on the eighth grade team this year. Even in the short time that we've been doing this since October, historically, our students tend to dip on math testing in the winter, and we either held steady or went down. So, we thought that was a positive, just after three months of intervening with our students.
Okay. Collaborating with the instructional coach. One of the things, I personally don't know how the other three coaches in our district are able to do as well as they're doing. Because finding time to meet with the teachers in their busy schedules is a very challenging part that I've come across this year. And one of the things that with our built-in schedule of meeting with the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teams, I have so far this year met with the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers for seven thousand minutes when you combine all of those. And that's built-in time. It's actually more than that. I took one or two teachers that I don't meet with regularly and figured their minutes in. It's probably closer to eight thousand right now. Seven thousand's all I would comfortably say that I've met with the group. During that time, we've looked at math assessments, some differentiated instruction with that. We're looking at how to group students. One of our big focuses is standard-based grading. So, that's been a major conversation throughout the year. Formative assessments, unit planning, integration of technology. And I'll go back a year with the Chromebooks. I don't know that the middle school would be as smart as we are with the Chromebooks without this built-in time because we took a lot of PLC time and shared ideas of what was working and ways to improve because technology did have a little bit of a bad name for us for a little while on whether certain devices would work. And so, that conversation has helped there. One thing that I believe that it's helped, we're a long ways from perfect. We're continuing to grow. When we started this journey, I remember sitting in the sixth grade one and all we talked about was student behavior. From the start of the time to the end. Year two, if people, because we hear different things where people want to say, oh, we need to get rid of this or that. Year two, I probably would have been right on board. Year three and four now, five, I don't have that, I have the feeling that we need to keep this and that it should be something to choose and try throughout the district. I know it's very difficult. But if a school is able to find something that's working, I think you need to try to maximize your time with those students. And no matter what, if Hawthorne's able to do something that we're not able to do, more power to them or George Washington, maximizing our time together. Before, I'm not a big one to get up in front of people to speak. I also want to represent teachers and different things. I wanted to make sure that it's easy for me in my position right now because my job is collaborating with each and every one of them. So, of course, I want it to be something we continue on. But I wanted to make sure that that was theirs because I know three years ago, that would not have been the case. Everyone that has collaborative time definitively said they can't imagine it without. I will say that on the, looking at student data, that part is starting to really improve. I saw a quote in a training last week, and I think it applies to a lot of things. But in the beginning, I think our middle school was focused on the tree. And now, we're starting to see the forest as far as more of the kids. We were so isolated in, oh, I teach reading, or I teach math, and we didn't care what was going on in other areas. For this collab time, now we're looking at how to improve all hundred twenty, hundred forty kids in that. And hopefully then, we continue to make it towards where we're looking, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And the last part is, as I look here at some of the different people in my position, just real quick on the coaching part, which I know that we've invested money in, it's a little harder than I thought. I came from a district that had established one, and I thought, oh, I can come in right away, just start planning and stuff. Some of the conversations, I talked to each and every one of these individuals at other times. But when you actually start talking about the planning, talking about formative assessments. Sometimes it's a little awkward conversation, but with this collaborating time, we've had these conversations. So, now, when I go to meet with them individually, it's not a new experience because this is what we're doing every week. So, if I want to talk to one of them, it's just a natural transition. So, I just can't imagine a time without it. Every PLC, some thoughts are coming, sorry. I'm a little scrolled here. The PLC Institute that went to in October and that we've all gone to, I sat in a lot of the trainings, and their biggest thing was the schedule. We've got to craft a time, got to craft a time, got to craft a time. And I sat there thinking, we have the perfect schedule at the middle school. I mean, we can always tweak a little bit. So, now, it's our job to make it better. We shouldn't be trying to see ways to get rid of it, but how can we do a better job? I feel pressure on myself because I know that I have something the other coaches don't have right now. So, I feel like I need to make it better, better in the school. But I just can't say enough about the collaborative time, the benefits. Because I know there is a lot of people that don't have it that see it as a double plan of time. And it is planning, but it's planning towards the kids and getting in a group and collaborating. So, I think that's enough for all of us.
I'm trying to jump in. I put the district goals up, and I know they're kind of small and hard to see, but I highlighted number five. District goal number five ties directly back to the extensive PLC training that the majority of our district teachers have had, the tens of thousands of dollars the district has spent on our PLC, MTSS training, and that this collaborative time is used to directly support district goal number five, creating a collaborative environment to enhance and support student learning achievement. Our collaborative time, I will say ninety-nine percent of what we talk about in there in some way has a positive effect on student achievement. And it's not just working in academics. We also talk about maybe some social things the kids need to do. Who needs a mentor? Who needs to have some check-in, check-out time? We are focusing on the achievement, but we do know that all of those other things affect achievement. And so, our collaborative time and our MTSS that we have scheduled into the day directly support district goal number five. So, we wanted you to know that. This is just some books that I used. I have my information. Mr. Maploski asked me to present this. I pulled out my pile of stuff that I have and started going through it. And like I said, I'll share this presentation if you want to look more closely or if you want to see any of the resources that I use to...
Even all the members here are either MTSS committee members, building leadership team members, or Iowa core strategists. So, they, you know, value that time greatly. And we've heard, you know, that there is some thinking that our middle school just uses that time, maybe don't use it to the maximum for student achievement. We want to make sure, this is far too long. We should educate people about what this is and what better form to do that than here in front of the public and making sure that they know that we're part of work, we're not drinking coffee during that time, making jokes, sitting around doing other... Working harder than they would if they didn't have that time. And it is valuable, and they greatly benefit it. And we're going to see the results of our, from our student data because of it. Anybody else want to add anything?
Do you want to come in and visit? See how our collaborative time runs?
Absolutely. Send us that link.
I will send you that right now.
I'm going to send it to everybody.
Right. Yes, send it to everybody here.
And I would like to add, as you know, as the district focus continues to be the center of our focus because this is how our work is carried forward. So, as our district improvement, our district instructional leadership team is working within the strategic plan and the action steps going forward, that then goes to our buildings. And our buildings will be utilizing that with their building instructional leadership team and carrying it into their PLCs. And this is how, this is how we have to work is through this collaborative structure. And the middle school having it already built in place is something I would love to have CS build throughout all our schools because we definitely need it. So, in elementary, yes, it's going to probably take some really creative scheduling. I don't know, you know, we're going to have to do some investigation on that. But we're already talking at the high school about how can we get our teachers together so there is more collaboration within the plan.
I just want to make a comment that it was when it was first in the starting state and I went for, I went to Centuris as well with a group of people. I think it's just so nice to see the whole thing come a full circle now and being so successful in our schools. And I've seen what the training looked like and all, and now, so please, actually happen and be so successful. It's just fantastic. Thank you to all of you.
Thank you. Oh, business.
I have nothing to add other than we mentioned that we've met as a team. We continue planning to meet. I have four days already scheduled for within this month and the next month with our district instructional leadership team as we go forward so that we can bring this into our buildings during the summer and it is bigger than our...
Sarah Westholzer, this is the director of the most speaking building I mean. Most of you rather do. I make my way around, I try to get to every building as close as possible. Anyway, continuing applications. I did make it to the first meeting, the first reading at both policy. From our policy, from our lowest policy committee meetings, there were a few concerns about policy. One that came up was the use of food after award, like pizza parties and such things like that. Kids get in trouble, maybe not being able to have as much recess as a punishment, that's on the physical education part of it. And in fact, there's a lot of permissive language. Should not build a surge, not, but I think overall, even with all those things, I don't think that, I think we do really well. I did do our progress report. It's more of the benchmark, and you all got that information. And it was more of just kind of where are we at? What are our strengths? What are our weaknesses? What opportunities do we have to change, grow, improve? And we're working towards that. But Jason on board this year. I talked to him a little bit at the end of the day. We're going to work on, because I only really know the nutrition aspect of it. I'm not a PE teacher or coach. So, working with him on the physical education part of it and exercise part of it. But the majority of our things, actually, we are complying to what we have. There's just some things we need to leave, some things we need to kind of boost a little bit. One of them that I picked this year, my big one, was nutrition education. One of the goals for all the buildings is to promote nutrition and/or provide nutrition education at each grade level as part of a sequential comprehensive, standard-based program designed to provide students with the knowledge and skills necessary to promote and protect their health. I talked to different teachers. Are you doing health education? What are you doing for nutrition? And they said that they touched on it a little bit, but they didn't have a whole lot of different things. So, I've gone into classrooms this year. Of course, I can't hit everyone, but I worked with mostly George Washington and Hawthorne. I've gone into classrooms. We've done case testing, and we've talked about, I think you probably saw very happy type of work kindergarten that. We did superpar phase at the fourth grade level and talked about how different body systems work together with nutrition. So, try to get out there and do those things with them as much as I possibly can. The pre-k tour was another one. So, that nutrition education component, I've been trying to get out there as much as I can. So, I think it is, I don't think we had any recommended changes to it, but just trying to tweak what we've already got and make sure that we're hitting those opportunities.
Thank you. So, we will be to speak at...
Or I entertain a motion to accept it.
Any more discussion or questions for Sarah?
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? All right, on to new business. HS Park Lot.
Good evening. We have a little bit of technical difficulties out there we're working on. So, we ended up running data on my cellphone and sharing the presentation. We finally figured it out, so...
We finally figured it out, so. I don't think your computer broke in the process, did it, Kara?
No.
Uh, this is, this is one of our student leaders, Keakuck High School. Her name's Kara Kavanaugh. Um, she came to me with an idea and I thought, um, this is a great platform for her to get her idea out. And I almost feel her done or I'll let her go.
Yeah. So I'm Kara Kavanaugh. I'm a junior at a high school. And I have been approached by many students with the idea of individual parking lot painting. And I have loved this idea. I see it all over Twitter and Instagram, Facebook, about all the different schools like around us and throughout the country that paint their parking lots. And the benefits of painting our parking lot and just getting our school name out there is quite... It's really cool, actually. So this on the left side is a Google Images picture of our parking lot right now. It's extremely...
Donkey.
Gray. Yeah, it's, it's just a parking lot, you know? Like there's nothing to brand Keakuck High School on our parking lot. Like if you saw this on Google Images, you're like, oh, okay, it's just a parking lot. It's nothing big. It's not even marked for Keakuck mainly, which would be really cool even just to have a mark for Keakuck to brand it. And this on the right is a picture of what individual parking lot spaces look like. And I will get more detailed with that in a minute. So what we hope to accomplish with the parking lot painting is branding. We hope to add branding to the parking lot. Um, beautification, as you saw in the picture, it's gray and it's not very cool looking, so it'd be awesome to beautify it. Um, it promotes safe and organized parking as well as cleanliness and helps identification with the cars and the students in the parking lot. Since we don't really have cameras in there right now, it's hard to identify what happens in the parking lot without that, without that type of identification. And the individual parking painting would help that. Oh, all right. I didn't fix that.
She's really getting that point across.
Okay, so the parking lot now is, yeah, there's a lot of trash everywhere. It's like silly string and like, I'm pretty sure there was like eggs in there somewhere. And this picture is, is really hard to tell, which is the main point. There is an arrow that is supposed to tell you which direction to go in the parking lot and you can't see it, which is not very helpful to have the arrow there if it's not seen. So what we're hoping to do is repaint that arrow, like add some branding, paint a couple K's in the driveway and just... So it promotes safe parking. You know where you're going now. This is, I don't, I don't know what is on the parking lot, but it'd be cool to paint over that a bit. And then that's, yeah. There, you can't really see the lines in the parking lot either, so it's really hard to park when you can't see the lines, especially on a rainy day. You don't really know where you want to start to park. So branding, um, those three or four little flags on the lights are all the branding that we have in our parking lot. And what I hope to do for branding specifically is take these two entrances and exits and paint the curves purple for Keakuck. And the little feathers do driveway K's, the big K's that you see in the driveways for fundraisers. But the little feathers, I talked to Shannon and she said that we would paint the K's on the driveway facing in to enter and out to exit. And we would do that for free as like advertisement for us because it is a fundraiser, but we would paint that as branding. As advertisement for little feathers, just to add some branding along with those flags. And beautification, um, the pictures and ideas that students have to paint their parking spot are actually really, really neat. You get the creativity of all the students. Yeah, that would be my parking spot. It's a lot of fun. Students get really involved and you get all the classes working together because you get to go in and paint a parking spot. And hopefully there's a week or two in August that we can set aside for you to go in with your friends and paint your parking spot. And each of the parking spots will be approved by Mr. Magdlear, I believe, on an application. You have to sketch out your parking spot and you have to apply for the parking spot with your make, model, year, license plate of car. Um, so that way it's in the books. You know where you're supposed to be. And it has to get approved so that nothing like inappropriate for school will be on there. And it helps with safe and organized parking. This is from somebody who parks, um, like that every day. And as you can see, that's, um, they're way out in the middle of the parking spot mainly because you can't see where the lines are. And having these parking spots painted will give them an idea of where they're supposed to park and how far in they're supposed to go because right now they're in the middle of the parking lot. And that's a huge hazard because if you're just driving through the parking lot, they, their car could get hit. And that's just a big thing that doesn't need to be dealt with. And then this is, there's like two or three trucks every day that take up three or four, like two to three parking spots. Um, and it's not very organized. It would be a really cool thing if they could have their own parking spot instead of taking up like two or three of the front parking spots that are really good, you know? And it's hard to have to drive around the parking lot when one car is taking up two parking spots. When you could be...
Please let me know next time we have students park this way.
And it's hard because they like leave to come back, so you never know. You just never know like how people are going to park because it's hard to see it. Like in the front, the parking spots are clearly marked, but everywhere else it's just, it's hard to see. And it promotes cleanliness as well because as you can see, there's, there's trash in the grass and on the parking lot. And what we would hope to do with that is once you are assigned your parking spot, you are responsible for the area around your parking spot. You need to keep it clean. And if it's not, you know who you are, we have your application. And there's going to be some sort of confrontation to be telling them they need to keep their parking spot clean because we don't want people coming into our parking lot and being like, oh, there's trash everywhere. They don't like to keep their stuff clean and we want to help with that. And identification, a lot of the kids, um, not only is it in the records as who has the parking spots, they like to paint their names on their parking spots. So it helps like even if you just go out to the parking spot, you know who is parked where because they have their name on it. And it's also in the records for who is, who is where and what car is supposed to be there. And if someone were to park in the wrong spot, we would know. And we would be able to confront that and deal with that head-on. So the process for getting this done is we would hope to have a diagram or like a document of each parking spot and it would be numbered. So that will take some work, but it could be done. And you will have a member parking spot. And there is an application that I've made up where you have to have your name, your grade, your license plate, your make, model, year of car, and your design that you hope to put on your parking spots. And that all has to be approved by Mr. Magdlear before you can go in and pick your parking spot. And we want to do that seniors down, so seniors get first pick of the parking spot because, I mean, it's seniors.
You're going to get seniors next year.
I'm trying to be, you know, it's all right. And we would have a couple of days where seniors, after they've been approved, would go in and look at the diagram, pick the number of the parking spot that they want. It's first time, first year. And once they pick their parking spot, that's theirs. You get to go market, you get to paint it in August. And then once all the, the two days for seniors is up, it would be juniors. And then if underclassmen have a car, it's okay for them to do that, but it does have to be approved. And then what we're hoping to have it look like is when you look on Google Images, you get to see these really cool, really colorful parking spots as well as the big K in the driveway and as well as the arrows that tell you which way to go. So that promotes safe parking. And it's just really good branding. We can take this and we can put it out on social media. We can put it out on Twitter. We can put it out everywhere and say, this is Keakuck High School's brand new parking lot. And after, there would be the K in the middle of that with the purple curves. And it would just be a really cool thing to be able to brand the school as well as just promoting safe parking. It's a safety thing and identification. And so, yeah, that's what my opinion of the parking lot is.
Will there be, um, parking for visitors? Or will you take every spot?
Well, we do during school day, of course, but then, you know, it's, it's wide open at night time.
And other times I park there during the school day. I don't take anybody's spots. So I gotta need to make it up.
And a lot of the parking spots, some of the kids like to park on the gravel, so up front, close to the trees. And so some of them may not choose to go into the parking lot. Like we have a lot of open spaces now. And once we have kids choose, they're going to want to be up front. So mainly the front of the parking lot will be painted for the students. And the back of the parking lot will mainly be open.
This is just senior's school bed.
Yeah.
Because when people come for events in the evening, open. Now, what happens if someone wants a spot?
Um, if they don't want to paint, they can apply for a parking spot and that will just be their spot. And it'll just be marked with a number, but it won't have to be painted if they don't choose.
What happens when you graduate? Is it the responsibility of the senior?
He thought about having a ceremony. So it would be like the ceremony of the parking spot. And you get, you would either, there's like, I don't know what it's called, but there's a paint remover that you can either have fun with it and like splash it on the paint and like remove your paint so you're leaving and moving on. Or what I see most commonly is you just paint over your parking spot with a neutral color, black or white. And so that way it's ready for the next year. But it's kind of like a ceremonial thing for the next grade to be able to come on up.
Yeah, and there's a few ideas that I mean, we could just go seniors next year to start it off or, uh, if it's approved. But I did, I will add one thing. Um, I did decide, well, I didn't decide, I want to talk to you guys about, uh, putting numbers on the parking stalls. I think it's super important to have in the numbers. We've had feather mentors out there this year. Who knows who parked in what stall? Because that, you know, as our kids come and go from classes, we don't know. Um, and it's been an issue this year. Uh, so it's very important for us to, I mean, not park in four spots at once, but also put numbers out on the parking lot. I think it's, it's super important. And to add some pride, uh, some branding and things would be a great thing for our school. So super proud of Kara tonight, you know, good job.
Just taking Justin out, present weather and what you're going to put on or withstand asleep, do you know?
Yeah, um, it will fade over time, just like with the, um, the K's that the feathers do. If you want to maintain your paint, it's just something that the students have to do on their own. And the paint is purchased and all the materials is the student's responsibility and that's on the application.
So the students pay for their paint?
Yeah.
It's probably, it's their responsibility. And if they want to keep it maintained and make it looking nice, then that's also their responsibility. But it should pay over time.
And if we don't want to do the whole party, you know, if it is a decision based, you know, as a senior kind of pride thing, they can donate some spot launches to the juniors and everything like that, so.
Any thought of auctioning off the best spots briefly? Places to do?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking about that.
I mean, it's a lot type of deal and thirty bucks or forty bucks is a deal for the choice.
Yes.
Oh, really?
I've seen schools do that as well.
That's...
Even your kitty.
Oh, it's set for the highest bidder.
Do you, in making digital work, doing this now, are you part of student council or a feather or...
Um, I...
That she started.
This idea was just me personally, but I am a little feathers leadership student council.
Great, I guess. Who wants to act on this? All right, any questions? Any more questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept Kara's idea. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I'd like the application for us to see here for Mr. Magdlear to get final approval on it. The only thing I would have a question on would be, uh, the student at the end of the year, if they're graduating and they're leaving and they're not going to either remove it or paint it in black, whatever you suggest, just something to, to make sure that would happen for the next class bidding on it or, or if they do it.
Yeah, I think what we could do is, um, just put a fee on that if they don't. Um, because they have to pay the fee before they graduate too. So we could have a fee on that for, you know, we say if it's just cut off...
Just something so that...
And what about the safety? Anything for the pain and the eyes and all that?
Don't eat the paint.
Yeah.
No, yeah.
And I'm sure you have teachers that would be willing to supervise, supervise for a couple hours. I know Mr. Hall said he would help in any way that he can. He could, I'm sure could get a couple of teachers to help supervise Hall painting.
Yeah, in August for sure. I could be there for the second week, you know, I'm there, so.
What do you have to do when someone says, Billy's in my spot? Are you supposed to apologize to that? Billy's parked in my spot.
They're going to be numbered next year and we are going to have an outline. I would like to have them numbered, um, and know where everyone's at. Uh, but, uh, you're going to have to move. I'll take care of that. That's why I think is if we're going to start this first year, I think you probably just do seniors is because you don't want to have a, you know, you don't want to just go out of control and see how they... Yeah, yeah. And it's kind of a luxury for seniors that it worked hard, so.
Any other discussions? When would this be start?
Um, the application would start hopefully before school gets out. So that way you can come in during the summer with your, on certain days if it's just going to be seniors, they would have a week to come in, pick their spot. And then a month or so later in August, they'll be able to.
Any more questions? All right, all in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any votes? Thank you.
All right. Good job, Kara.
So, um, the next thing on the list is, is transfer of the William Aldrich Fund from Connection Banks to the General Fund. Um, we, we received word from Connection Banks. We have several, uh, trust fund accounts that have been held by the house money account currently there. And, um, they will no longer service those without a fee to us anymore. And some of these, some of these accounts, um, would be replenished pretty fast with a fee. So, um, I've been working on trying to find the best way to handle them. Um, specifically the William Aldrich Fund, it actually is not a trust, um, but it was some funds that were left to us who approximately thirty-eight hundred dollars and it's to assist students with paying for items and fees. Um, really, I think what it's been used for in the past has been to help students who can afford a graduation cap or gown, um, to help them afford those with this fund. So what, um, what we'd like to do, uh, if, if the board would make a motion to accept or to approve, uh, the transfer of those funds actually into our general fund. And we will set up an account, um, very similar to the Betty Oliver Fund that we have in backpack programs as well. Um, we'll specifically designate it for that, but we will manage it one hundred percent on the listed side. So I just...
But that one will be specifically for the board?
Absolutely, absolutely. Just like the backpacks. So we just want to make sure that those funds are used for the purpose that it was left for and not eaten up by money fees. Um, so the auditors suggested that if the board would approve the transfer of that to the general fund and we want to take over the management. All right, I'll entertain a motion to do that. So... Any more discussion? All in favor? Say aye. There are a few other ones that are truly trust, um, so we're working on those.
Hey, middle school doors.
Um, yes, Aaron cannot be here tonight. Um, he has a, he had a family death. Um, so I am staying in place for him. Uh, I did email you guys out a couple of weeks ago, or maybe it's been a bit longer than that, regarding some middle door, some middle school doors that need to be replaced. Um, they have, uh, they have, um... Um, they have, uh, they have, um, I'm deteriorated. Yes, trying to think of the word, rusted out. I think they're very rusted out, and they got to the point of beyond repair at this point. Um, so we would like, um, approval. Uh, there's five doors, and the total of about, um, I think the two bids, one was twenty-five thousand, one was about twenty-nine thousand. Obviously, we would like to accept that that is still there, um, so we are asking for the board to approve that. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, there's a list of, of, uh, funds that have been donated, um, all specifically related to, uh, the garden carts that Sarah has implemented so that classes can grow their own gardens. Um, so we, we received several, uh, sponsors for the garden carts, and we're just asking for approval of those.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Keep going. Okay, all right. Um, this is the last one, so then somebody else can steal the show. Um, okay, so we have been approached, um, by an Olathe, Kansas, youth group, um, would like to use our facility overnight, um, for two nights. Uh, they would like to, um, use the gym, well, we discussed, Jason's with me using the call. Uh, we discussed having them use the gym, and having them use the, um, wrestling, wrestling room to keep them, um, in one section of our school. And, uh, they, uh, we, we discussed, talked with them, they'll be basically getting up early in the morning and not coming back till ten or eleven at night. Um, so they would stay with us for two, two evenings, and, uh, and then they would actually do some service work for us, um, and pick up. We've decided is we'd actually have them go around and pick up trash, and help utilize our grounds, um, for three or four hours before they leave on Saturday. Um, June first and second, is that correct? Um, so we're just bringing this to the board, um, to, to see if it's, you guys will approve that using it overnight. A hundred and seventy-five.
What age?
Um, I.
Believe middle school high school.
Middle school high school, yes.
And what's this group again, sorry?
It's in Olathe, Kansas, they're from Olathe, Kansas, um, and it's youth group, it's youth group.
Uh, is it connected with a church?
I, I believe so.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what group or.
Why are they coming to you?
Um, I believe, are they going to Namu? They're going to Namu, they're do, they're, whatever they're doing, their functions are at Namu all day. I'm not.
It, it was talked about last year, but I wasn't at the high school, I don't know if it officially happened.
Well, I know how, and I understand the basketball court, but that floor is.
Yeah.
And one time, when, when, when music was into for something, it was a complaint about a scratch on the floor.
So will the tarts be put down?
We could put the tarts down, yeah.
Our transcarriers.
Our transcarriers, that's completely fine, as long as we get a certificate of liability insurance from them. Um, I did tell her that today on the phone, and she said, not a problem, we do that all the time whenever they go. Um, this is, I think, typically where, what they do, um, when they go different places.
Will they bring food in, eat there?
They, they'll like be serving breakfast, um, yes, they, they did, they're gonna be bringing their own food.
Would they be sleeping bags?
Yes, sleeping bags, and, and.
And how much money are we charging?
Um, we're doing our, our normal wear and toll fee, which is five hundred dollars, um, in, in the details, so it would be a thousand dollars, plus the service work.
How many supervisors are they gonna have?
I don't know the answer.
I don't know the answer to that.
With certainty asked.
And how can we guarantee that they'll stay in that area?
Um, you know, ultimately, we can't cage them in that area, um, for fire reasons, of course. Um, they are gonna be there, ultimately, they're not gonna be back until ten or eleven at night, so they ultimately will be sleeping in, and then they wanna juice up the.
Be, be the teenagers.
I feel, whatever they're doing, they'll be tired of that.
Okay, they'll be trying showers and baths.
They'll be using the lock. And they will be sleeping.
We talked about having boys, the boys and girls upstairs, and the other downstairs, so that they're separated.
So any way to keep them out of going, uh, toward the ninth grade wing? Are there any of those old steel expandable gates that would be cleared down toward the boiler room? Because that would give them plenty of higher exits and things out. I don't think so, I'm just trying to picture it.
Those are just the double doors there now?
Yeah, and that would stop them from going into the shower, so they can't close it.
No. No, on the side of the stairs.
Can we find out how many supervisors walk out, so we can?
I can't.
That would eliminate, that would keep them out of, out of the boiler room and.
So they're going to be throwing the jail or not?
Correct.
And everybody just coming in, they'll have practice in the morning, and then come to sleep in their summer at night?
No, no, no.
No, coming to sleep at night?
Just coming to sleep at night, correct. The only meal that they will be having is practice. I'm sorry? The jam. They'll all, we'll have to give them a visitor badge, just for those two.
And you can make that access.
It can just access the one specific group, correct.
Hold that for two days, I'll do.
Two days almost.
I would be in favor of, but I would want you guys to get more information as to how many chaperones, and they've done this before, it sounds like.
Correct.
And have they had any problems before?
She assured me that the facility will be one of the better condition than, than when they're not there. And I think they probably will, because this is how they function. So they don't wanna cut off their own, but.
Again, uh, I think they just proved others, I think they've needed a lot, and, but, you know, school, school, school.
Can you check with, um, please, they might have been before, just calling.
Just call the school that they went to, and just say how it was.
I was, just get a feedback.
Say that they said they would.
No.
Yeah, aye.
So then we have something, we should.
Do you need action on that?
Yeah, can we have a motion that we accept it if these guys get the right information that they need?
I don't know, what about president? You are receiving, you, you, we did, we haven't had any question before, now we're, we have, we have, I mean, that might not be as responsible, we, we, we did it before.
Why do you come here in front of me?
Well, if we, if we vote on it and give them permission to check references, they've done this before, everything's going fine. For anybody else that would be coming in, we'd ask those same questions, have you done this before? Give us. References so that we can check them?
That's fine, but I mean, there, there could be some problems down the line, especially down similar to local group.
I don't think a local group would want it other than they would want to use the facilities, and this isn't about using the gym, just like basketball.
They have these sleep tanks over the wire, I have it, the local groups usually do it.
Because they have.
And have shower, shower facilities for them. Uh, you said that one group would go up, one group would go down, and those showers are working, and.
Right, now they are.
Everything's fine that way.
Do you have to have a custodian on duty? While they're here?
Sure, we want something else, please.
And will they be required to be?
Um, I mean, if custodians are fired, then, then yes, they don't have to have paid the fee.
I think we want some custodian there with the showers going on, make sure there's no water, any problem with water.
What about the coach, I mean, like, the wrestling coach, I mean, is that cool to, to, he doesn't have, I mean, would they have any problem? They have the mats up, I suppose, and, and.
Is there, is there a door that locks to the wrestling room?
Yes.
Yeah, you can lock that.
Your breath?
Yeah.
I mean, you won't be able to get in there.
Okay, so they wouldn't be going in the, oh, I thought, they're not going in for wrestling, for basketball.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are, yeah. That's where they would be sleeping, yes. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry, they are.
If you have the mats down, or the mats up?
Have they got sleep downstairs on the gym floor also? Okay, you're putting.
Either the boy, the smallest group would go upstairs, and the largest group would go downstairs.
Okay, and then they'd use those same shower facilities that way.
Do you think this is a good idea because of revenue, is that why you're saying, asking this for this?
I, I'm sorry.
Do you think this is a good idea because of revenue?
Oh, no, I just think it's a good thing to help group out, I, I don't think, I, I mean.
It's a youth group, we're a youth business. I would make a motion to allow it pending further discussion with you two, and checking a reference or two, and how many chaperones they're going to have, and if the central office feels that's enough chaperones, to say yes, and make that motion.
And the coaches, if that, they should be moved.
They're responsible for custodian fees too.
Yeah.
Outside of the.
And I used to, I would courtesy the coaches, the rest of the coaches should be notified.
That's what I was just asking. Technically, uh, offseason stuff, our coaches cannot start coaching until June first anyway. Um, you're, you're looking at tying up the gym for about a day.
But they wouldn't be in there.
It may, it may not be. Yeah. Have they gave you anything summer wise yet? I don't have any schedules, I have a few, but nothing that conflicts with this.
So, yeah. Subdue to.
Can we check the?
Okay, all those additions, like, motion, or second?
One second.
Now, any discussion?
So the discussion would be you two, if anybody else involved with that, high school principal, central office would have to make sure that the building was scheduled, ready, and, and as far as that, the cleaning of the building, they usually do that later, don't they? As far as, uh, uh, the cleaning crew coming into the building, I think you guys go later on that, but that would need to be checked, our youth groups that use the building. Um, how many chaperones are gonna have a reference? And they would have to, yeah, I think would be a good idea to have custodian, or, I just in case there's a plumbing problem, at least X number of hours.
Or on call? I mean, I'm just asking, do you want them physically there, or just?
I don't know, if you're gonna charge them with custodian, you know.
We'll only charge them physically.
Always. That line that we have under the rental of that, does it say a custodian has to be there anyhow, when somebody rents it?
I can't remember, do you remember, Jason?
I believe so, but I don't know about anything that's overnight, I don't think we've ever had, at least not this year, I don't know.
It still would, it would still say, if we have it, it would be while they're there, which in this case would be overnight. I think there's something in there to that effect that.
I know we, we, we don't always charge all groups custodian fees, because they don't, some of them don't ask for custodians, they check yes or no whether they need it. So I do know how all groups are charged. Like, this group said they were gonna leave at school in the same, when they found it, so.
So probably somebody during the day, and then somebody on call at night, I would wanna keep a custodian there for the night or like that, so.
Well, the day wouldn't affect us, it just means regular. Yeah, they're not there, so, but that wouldn't be our.
So maybe checking in, then.
Could be just a whole one or two hour building check, what we do anyway.
Right. All right, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So, Russ, she said references, custodian boards covered.
Yeah, I'm.
Coaching, I think, I know. Those are good ideas.
We'll email it to board.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, well, we're gonna be sharing agreement for speech.
One second. I'll take the chair.
Hi, this is, is this something we've done before?
Yes, I think so, yes.
But I always want to know why you don't have an education, and even program with them, with Central Lee. And in high time, we also said, they have a well-established education program, I'm sure that we, students in this from our side as well.
In the past, they've had that, and we have had students.
Past, really, long time ago, I think we need to revisit it again, because I think this is a strong program, and in our area, we're so close by. I think we should try it one more time.
Well, I think we could just put up a signup sheet, and see if we got any, if we have any interest in.
How many students participate in this?
I don't know, Mark might know.
Mark?
Barbara?
I'm sorry, I'm working.
How, is, is sharing with Central Lee with speech and individual events, how many participate? Now, you're not doing it this year, Barbara, how many do you think participate in that?
Speech team from Central Lee?
For, like, dual credit classes, or for what?
No, just.
For speech. It's, it's usually not more than five kids at a time. Last year, I'm not sure, because I did coach last year, and sometimes there's, you know, a few.
I think this year was right at five, too.
So you might have some financial fluster for this. Thank you, Barbara.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, like, accept this agreement. One second.
One second.
Any more discussion?
Um, you discuss other, sharing things with them.
I.
And we, we pass, we pass those anyhow, maybe we should include this, so that it's all at one time.
Yeah.
So, do we have questions? I mean, we share.
Well, we share soccer and bowling.
Soccer, bowling.
Soccer is something that may or may not continue, because they're trying to start their own program, now they have, they have inquired about tennis as well, on the girl's side.
So, if while you're doing that, you could ask about the, uh.
Russ, I think it'd be interesting to see what they say to that. I'll just leave it at that.
Say what, I'm sorry.
That's what I, I'll have you check that.
So, getting out, just, yeah, all sharing agreements instead.
I haven't seen much on the other end of our sharing agreement.
Sudden, sudden fall.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll make the student handbook for the call.
Uh, sure, uh, so first thing I think we wanna mention, uh, I believe the copy that you got is the very first item there, is it attendance? The very first item on the handbook. Yes, yeah, so after you get past the elementary school hours, the very first, uh, uh, past that schedule there, the very first thing there is attendance. We wanna disregard that part right now, we gotta do a little bit more labor before we're ready to kind of move that on. It kind of repeats itself, and you work down towards trinity and attendance, but we wanna make sure that all of our people who are handling attendance are doing it same, consistently, for the purpose of our buildings, before we go ahead and try to get approval on that. Um, so we wanna disregard that part for a while.
Not too many changes, um, a couple things, um, you know, if we've added a line in the bicycles, not line, or not responsible for lost, or a damaged bicycle. Um, we have a lot of doors that affects us more than, than Hawthorne, um, that are there after hours, or things like that. Um, let it back, take it around, so we aren't responsible for them. Um, little things, adding a phone number, um.
Change the dates on the.
Change the dates on the next enrollment.
Have we changed some wording on that, too?
Last year, we had, there were two handbooks, uh, there was one handbook, but then there was, um, it was sort of split into two, with Hawthorne had some things, and GW had some things, so they couldn't. Last year, we had, there were two handbooks, there was one handbook, but then there was, it was sort of split into two, with Hawthorne had some things, and GW had some things, so they put in two different copies. This year, we just wanted to combine them. I think it's important that Hawthorne has our information, we have their information, so it flows, so we're just creating, we put them together. And then we added a section as far as the student behavior, it was just another combination of some things Hawthorne had in theirs last year, and we had in ours. But the next thing we added was teacher request policy. We feel that we have very highly qualified teachers all across the board. However, we're willing to attain requests. They aren't guaranteed.
And here's the thing that I found into, too, both the, my first two years in the district, I put together the rosters at Hawthorne. And each of those first two years, we've gotten somewhere in the range of a hundred to a hundred and fifty teacher requests each year. So, our teachers work very hard to put together students based on needs, and where they feel appropriate groupings would be, and, you know, they know the mix of kids and everything. So then, the next step, those requests come into play, and then by the time you try to grant everybody's requests, those rosters look entirely different. And sometimes it's not the best mix, and we've tried to, as much as possible, grant those in the past, and we don't, we're not saying we don't want to not permit requests, but we just wanna kind of limit those, because a lot of those requests are just based on, well, I like this person, or this person is my neighborhood, or, you know, it's, it's things like that, instead of, there's a specific need for that kid, why they need to be in that teacher's room. So we wanna kind of limit it a little bit more down to that.
And one thing, Barb and Diane Burner approached me at the beginning of the year about a concept called clustering classes, which we are very interested in at GW, and we've been sort of looking at how that would look next year. And what it is, basically, you still have a classroom of variabilities. However, it will be broken up, and we've sort of done a mock trial using the math data, because you have your five ranges from high, high average, average, low average, and low. And so, out of the classrooms, the TEG kids would be maybe in two or three of the classrooms, and split amongst themselves, which would allow Diane to really pull in, or push out in, push in and pull out. She can go in, focus on them. So that class would be comprised of some TEG kids, but the TEG kids, no high achieving kids, and some average and some low kids. So therefore, or low average kids, so therefore, you don't have the high of the high, the low of the low. Last year, when I was teaching, I had the very highest student who tested on math, and the very lowest. And it, to meet that, and close that gap is, is very hard. So this just narrows the gap. There's still variability. The other teachers would have the high average kids, that shows that they succeed, and Barb, you can help me, because you.
Yeah.
Add anything that you need to add. They would have a mix of the other four ranges. And we're looking at math scores for that data. But it shows excellent growth in just those gifted kids, and those high achieving kids. And when we look at our data at GW, we can see we're getting tons of growth in those lower level kids, and our higher level kids, they're growing, but maybe one or two. Or they maybe dropped one, but they're still on grade level. So we really wanna see the growth we're getting, we're meeting the needs of the lower, and by clustering, we would be able to meet the needs of the higher as well. So, as far as the teacher request, the teachers when we've talked to it would be something that they aren't specifically trained, but willing to work with Diane, or go to some different PD on how to really, it's not just going through the standards quicker, it's deepening an understanding of them. And so, I have some teachers interested in that. So if I have a TEG kid coming in, and their child wants this teacher, well, I can better serve your child in this classroom rather than this, and so that, balance that out, too, and that might not be the best fit, that's what they want.
So you're still going to honor the teacher from the teacher request from the parent, because it's not, you just want some word that means it's not automatically gonna be.
Right, and so, and it says in there, you know, we take into consideration, but doesn't necessarily guarantee.
That's what we hear.
We just wanna kind of restrict a little bit, because like I said, there's some things that, you know, those requests.
And teachers do put a lot of time and effort, as far as thinking about a year ahead. And they really look, okay, these, this group of kids didn't work well together, so we need them separated some more. And that's not information we aren't gonna give to parents, and they aren't gonna know. But to meet the needs of their child, they need to know, we're doing the best we can on what we're seeing there, and we really take a lot of consideration.
And then the only other thing that we added there at the very bottom, we did include our major and minor definitions and our matrices for our school-wide expectations through GW and Hawthorne. We communicate these things home to parents quite a bit. We talk about these with our students from day to day, so it'd be nice for parents to be able to see that as well, and have a copy of that for them to refer to. Especially if they ever have to call them to discuss something, they can see that there's some sort of decision-making process tied to that, it wasn't just a random, you know, consequence, there's, there's something that we use to guide our decision-making.
Do you talk about that during parent teacher conferences, or are you explaining?
I'm sorry?
During the parent teacher conferences, do you, do you talk about that?
I think it would depend on the student, if it's a student who's having a hard time meeting those expectations, I would say yes, but not necessarily. Talking just behavioral expectations.
I like that you guys are working together and making it more of a district, and it goes right along with DLC concept.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept. Oh, okay.
Yeah, just disregarding the attendance piece. Yeah, everything else except the attendance piece.
Do you want to approve it, or do you want us to wait?
You can approve it without.
Can we approve it at a later date?
Sure.
We just have to. Yeah, because, I mean, we've already edited our versions on our, but we have, that's not the copy that you guys have in front of you.
Is it going to affect when you guys send that out to get printed in conjunction with our board meeting? I would just, I would entertain that we talk about it now, and when you guys get that, just email us.
Bring it back.
So that we know.
Well, I think what we talked about, too, is just bringing it back, because we really want the deans to get together, student services to get together, and, and make sure, and even bring in middle schools, to make sure, and, and looking at board policy, that we're following the policy that's set.
And it need to be done by a certain date, though, to send that to a printer to get printed, or?
I think we're gonna put them in the printers next year.
Yeah.
So.
And we made those orders this late, it's, I wanna say we made the orders for those in August last year, so I mean, we have, we still have some.
All right, great, thank you. Very little school.
Can I actually speak back? There was something that, but it's not on, that we had an updated agenda that's not on this one.
Yeah, there was.
Sorry, volunteer coach.
Okay.
I'll speak that one.
Yes, all right. Volunteer tennis coach.
It was for.
It was for Kelly to help out if ever needed with, with our situation, the girls' tennis program, having to kind of share a coaching situation there. There's every day when the boys are maybe gone, and Gary can't be there, and therefore, just to help out with practice if they need.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept? Any more discussion?
Who was the question?
All right, all in favor, say aye. All right.
Definitely can see the changes there, that were on there. Just a reminder, as our PDIs assume, we continue to tweak based on our data, tweak our supports, our PDIs do. Make some, just minor tweaks to the behavior charts, as they mentioned, the deans have been working to make their system more consistent, that's been updated, our attendance policy. You know, you see bullets there, so if you have any questions. There's a still need update before we present the print.
I make a motion if we approve it.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now the parent handbook.
I think staff handbook is next, but you can actually X that off, we're gonna finalize that this summer, because it's electronic anyway, if you don't send it to print. There's a thousand pages we need to adjust there, and so you, you will, no actions needed on the staff handbook, that's just electronic. That's next on my list, I don't know what.
So now on the parent handbook.
Parent handbook, beginning to see a lot of the adjustments that Jody did this year, trying to model it more after what the other building were doing, maybe get more consistent. She listed the pages there pretty easy, exactly what updates were made, a much cleaner than what it was, included pictures of the staff, a very nice handbook. Deans get printed for the incoming fifth grade students and parents, and everybody else is electronically on the website.
I make a motion if we pass that as presented.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay.
Okay, did you get Google Doc to share with you the changes? Okay. First up, we've been working all year on course guide, preparing a course guide, so it's still in cross, process of being completed, because course descriptions, units, everything very similar to the parent handbook, the middle school did, mobility and count, what Fort Madison's doing, and we should up there, really was pretty impressive what they had. So, we had online, and got a data, did it since like the eighties, so we're gonna do that. So, you did approve the trinity, minor behavior. There are a few things to talk about. First up, we're looking at class requirements. Talking about five credits, because that may be a sophomore or not, and a lot of it has to do with our pacing, or what, where our students should be after the freshman year, the sophomore year, helps with identifying students, helps with talking with them, it also helps with, you know, knowing where they're really at. You can't be a junior with twelve credits and really be a junior, I mean, you've got a long ways to go still. So, and I do have a couple new classes that I would like to add to our graduation requirement, against the forty-eight, which I think is on the agenda, so I won't go into that detail, but this class requirement is built off of needing twelve credits to be a sophomore, twenty-four as, as, as a junior, I said that wrong, didn't I? No, you need twelve after freshman year, twenty-four after your sophomore year, thirty-six after junior year, and then forty-eight to complete your time. So, a fourteen-credit, fourteen-class, two semester thing, that would be twelve, so you could only fail two classes. So, that is part of that, and it leads right into our course recovery policy. Any student that fails a course, ELA, math, social studies, and science, is subject to repeating the following semester or year over. We really want to differentiate what online courses are for, they're used for students that are deemed at risk, which means falling under that class requirement. So it's not, you know, I just didn't like the second semester algebra, so I'm just gonna take it on computer, only if the department behind will be really able to get that current recovery. Or enriching, like I told you before, the classes that we don't currently offer. So it needs to be, there needs to be a better system in place than what we currently have. So it needs to be approved before they just jump online. And we noticed, I noticed a few kids this year that have been very scottly, just taking the plateau to get done their junior year, fast-tracking, but they're missing some things in the class or not doing.
Yeah, two more questions.
Yes, ma'am.
When a student is taking a number of classes, and that online class fits into the schedule, not for any other reason, but it's the same, it fits in, and that's the only time that they can do that.
Right.
So would you look into that aspect?
Yeah, we would, and we looked at that with physics this year, because physics brought it up with some of our SEC courses, and we did have a few students that.
My, my daily class, or.
Right.
Or like an online class.
If you have studies to those students as well, then they could come in at a different time, they might work from lunch schedules, and be able to do that.
For example, if you are a company.
Yeah, absolutely, it's not always gonna put up perfectly, and if a kid wants to take, say physics for example, we look at it, they just take the labs independently, and then just complete that. But I feel really good about our new program, we won't have to build any gaps with it.
Are you looking at this more, that freshman coming in to implement new experiences?
Yes, and then talking with the whole school next year when we open up about, you know, what constitutes, and they need to be keeping mindfully that they need to be on pace to graduate, so, you know.
You also said that you wouldn't stop any of that, you just wanna make sure that you approve it first on the, for the jumping over to an online class.
Online course, yeah.
So, is that something YouTube would look at, or is that the guidance department, or all three?
Sometimes we talk to the guidance about this year, most times I have to approve if anybody works in there, if they take some courses. I don't know if there's been a huge paper trail on that, and so, there needs to be more documentation on, on kids' schedules. You know, I was just like, wow, there's a couple students that graduate this year, I would say a few, probably already, but it is what it is, so we're gonna try to fix it. And we won't stop a fast-tracking junior, but, you know.
It would be more difficult for them to fast-track with these new requirements.
Our teachers have complained a little bit, that students just say, well, I'm gonna avoid the particular online or something, and that's, that's not working, so. It needs to be a good reason more, I think. Failure of SEC courses, is this something that we kind of, that put into play, but it's not in our handbook, I think it needs to be? You know, it is purpos to take SEC courses, I mean, we could look at it, then you can see or whatever, but I would at least let the start with, if you fail, you need to pay for the course. Because I think that there's no value in it if you don't have some standard beginning, and I think kids need to feel, they need to try, and they need to work on it, and nine times out of ten, if not attending, we don't have very many, we only have one or two this year, but, you know, and it's gonna be in the handbook, and explain to them that, you know, if you fail this course, you're gonna pay for it. Thoughts on that?
Yeah.
I talked to Janice, she said, is that kind of good, and I said, we need to get it right, because I don't want to give them much excuse about it, so.
How would that work for students that qualify for a waiver?
Look, they're gonna pay for it.
Yeah, he was, they don't have to pay for it.
Okay, anything else?
Oh, yeah. I know it's been a long one, so, cellphone policy, right now, our cellphone policy is, we take it, and then we put it in the vault for the rest of the semester. But that's not feasible, I mean, my parents want me to kill me if I'm keeping a big cellphone and paying the bill for three months. So, we have a teaching us thing in place right now, where basically, it's, I'm gonna explain to the students, just don't have it out during instruction. Okay, I'm not telling you can and can't later, or in the way of class, or the teacher wants you to use it, but during instruction, the cellphone needs to go away. And then, if it's out, or it's raining in class, and then the teacher asks it to keep it for the rest of class. Every now and then, if a student thinks it's their right to keep that cellphone and not give it to the teacher, well, then that's insubordination, and it falls into our, in school policy. They don't give it to me, then I'm just gonna call it, so. We don't want cellphones to be distracting every learning environment, so, that policy is a nice stage policy that hopefully our teachers can work with, and all these things I've talked about in the building, there should be about.
Can the teachers even go beyond that, if they want to take their friends to school that class time?
Yeah, I do have one teacher that has a basket, that just come in and put a right here basket.
Say your mom with that.
Yeah, they wanna go a little further, but we can supplement school-wide that our teachers can fall back on.
And if we see a student that, you know, is getting, needing to meld to my location with their cellphones in a lot of classes, then we have the right to do the check-in, check-out office during the day. Versus the vault thing, they just have to bring it to my cell phone to jump.
Yeah, thanks for adding that, yeah, and after we send them home, if it's, if it's a problem, we'll have a parent meeting, and then we'll start a policy to check it and off it and check, until we can finally get it right back. We did have a stipulation with prom, you know, we're talking credits again, right now, it's academic policy, so if they haven't had any course, I don't agree with that. I think it needs to be, if you seem to be on pace to be a junior, you know, do a prom. So, that's a little carrot, they have to stay on pace so that they're qualified for prom. So that was one policy to put in for prom as well. Any questions on that one?
And sophomores?
Sophomores can, they have to be on pace as well, although they can be asked by a junior, there's just no freshmen then, it's always been a policy. There's just no freshmen then, it's always been a policy. Yeah. We'll talk about graduate credits. P E waivers, there's, I think we have some P E waivers this year. We do four credits, we do eight credits. The state says we need eight credits. Now, how I look at it is this, if they're doing some type of exercise that equals an eighth unit according to Iowa code during the school day, then they can opt out of P E. That is marching band or show choir. Because we all know the dance and stuff they do with show choir is tremendous. I would like to see them do P E's to have a variation, but they already have that exercise in the day that equals that eighth unit of P E. So those are the only two opt-outs for P E. And it overloads their luggage anyway, when they're in show choir and in band, you know, they can't really take much else. Now, walking P E is gonna deal. So, we're looking at that being a junior and seeing their own course. I didn't like just seeing a freshman headed into walking P E the first time they come into our building. And also, they have to know to take it one semester. So they have to get the other semester of taking P E. So they're not, you know, this is working with our P E department. Walking P E has a little bit of value, but it doesn't need to be eight credits worth of walking P E at high school.
Can we come out to walk too?
Yes, you can. No problem.
One semester.
We go as fast as we can here. Someone was just editing things that needed editing. That's about it.
I have some questions.
Yeah.
On page 30, who's the human rights officer in your school?
That's a curve ball, Jane.
Yeah, it's under, it's reporting procedures. And this is about, if some things have to be reported to be reported to the human rights officer, is that your officer Johnson, or is this you? Or who is the human rights officer in the building?
It would be our administrator that we're really, we're talking about.
I think that's the way I understood that. A grad risk.
We're talking about harassment and everything. So Brad and I last year, then I as well, we have a complaint form. So if Heather's first on point, then she would be that person depending on if she handles it.
That's designated for a student.
And the complaint form that I use for London is a more policy.
For harassment, just things like that, or the lame, that's for instance.
Yeah, there's a thing here that's on B in the district, and it says, the human rights officer shall, and there's four things that says human rights.
Probably needs to just say administrator shall.
Well, I don't care, I wonder who's that.
Right.
I assume it was.
Yes, I think, I was the point on that last year a couple times, I said this when I cut out. So then I was very formal, I had the students fill it out.
Now, page 36 of your academic calendar, there's a reference change to, if a high school student has a failing grade in one or more courses, or if on the study list table. And in the study list table, it referred to it, do you have a study table list? Do you have a study table?
We haven't had a very good study table this year. I started the year by, we saw a lot of benefit with the kids working with the teachers, because that's kind of what the feedback I got. But it's really hard for our teachers to scale all that.
Well, it's one big room, and you need help in math, and maybe the person in there can't help them.
And that was the problem, that's why I wanted the teachers to kind of let kids, you know, to call home. But it's a lot on the teachers, I realize that. So what we're looking at for next year is switching it with the D E N A students and the A D, so it will rotate each week. And if they are ineligible for sports, working with the coaches, they go down there. It's not feasible for them to totally get with the teachers. So the thought was that we could have some National Honor Society students go in there and tutor, and fill that gap.
That's how we did it in the past, the teacher, I mean, the coaches had to do, we had to do so many weeks of it off-season, and then we had National Honor Society kids in there to.
Okay.
So my question is, do you need that study table list in there if you're not having?
Well, we had a big debate about that. We'd likely give it a go next year with our D E N A, our A D rotating in and out. Could be some coaches filling too, depending on all that, but on scheduling or typically the D L Cs, but. But I think it's still beneficial. We just need to work with our coaches without really implementing it.
We have some community to die on years of.
That'd be great too, sure.
Used to happen on the day of school.
Okay.
Is there some, I don't know what we're gonna look on for. If they are required to be there and they don't show up, is there evidence or best?
Well, that's, that's what was hard about implementing it with the whole school, because it's really hard to keep these there. But when they're in sports, the coaches typically work together. So I would think it would be more within that sport, calling a coach, hey, some student showed up, and of course, that'd be in their policies to handle that practice or whether they do fit. But I have talked to teachers about this year, if they scheduled something, provided as a major, so we're trying to get that part in still. Plus, I'm looking at it for sure, it is, but we hope that our athletes want to be there, our coaches are wanting to be there, that follow through will happen.
Then I have a question about all these scholarships that are handed out, scholarships award financially.
What page is it?
That's the 49, 50.
Okay.
Okay, and there's a impressive list, and how fortunate we are to have so many of these. I know, there's one listed, for instance, Dr. Chong Levor. And I know, I think you mentioned a friend of mine who was originally mentioned for designated to be on that oversight committee, making a selection. But the person hasn't been called in years. You would have no way of knowing this.
Sure.
I guess what I'm saying is, perhaps there are some people that are supposed to be involved in some of these awards that we don't, that if you could go back and find that information. Who usually oversees this and manages how these are selected?
One of our. That oversees it, there's a lot of people. I help with selection, guidance helps.
Sometimes, I guess I'm saying is, sometimes maybe you're making selections where originally there was supposed to be other people that came in to be involved and helping.
If you get some more feedback on that, I'd be very interested to look at those.
I could give you the name of the student.
Absolutely, and you know.
And it's any good, or just thought, well, you know, I guess we're just deciding on our own now.
No, that's not the case. In fact, my D E N A has a scholarship that I might not take in over here next year. It needs a lot to be relevant or involved with this. Oh, I understand.
Before Zach received, something going on for them.
Sure, absolutely.
And I think it's, you know, somebody was saying, the application process comes to the guidance office mostly. They may bring in a major.
Some.
And then they give the patients to whomever is the selection committee.
But I don't know if some of the people who are presently staffed in the building even know.
Right.
Or who is your go-to, and who are rich and designated to be involved in that process? That's my question.
I'll get that name from you afterwards. We have the best one person in the world handling some of this stuff, and that's Janice, and she knows the history of this. She's amazing, so I.
She is amazing.
If you have a name or something, I'll make sure it gets in the right place.
And we got a call from Rita also, too. I mean, we give, I think it was, she was going down, so she called whether we be leaving or just here.
Would.
The Janice office?
Rita did it, okay. So that one's gonna take care of it, okay.
Whether we give it to her.
But as we can think, you know, Rita being here the next few, last few, if something's happening, please let us know, we'll start raising it.
How do the seniors know of all the scholarships? I mean, if we, I have, that's really all, right?
Yeah, and then, they tend to do pretty good jobs. Tim's had the juniors and seniors now, they used to, we gave them, so Tim's been taking them.
So, so the seniors know of it sometime?
Yeah.
I mean.
I believe he sends emails out to the seniors when it notifies them that scholarships, applications available, or what's available, and that sort of thing.
So he has it all.
Usually someone gives guidance, but they're like.
Oh, putting on a Facebook page?
Yeah.
That's the idea. Because our guidance has one that I don't forget. Gets it from people, obviously, it's our. Sure.
I have a motion to be accepted. So, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Myself, there's. Okay.
Chair of the agreement department.
Like the board to allow us to share art for sure next year, and we can work out music, kind of whatever agrees there. Like about to be shared next year. Is that art thing, same G W thing?
I'm agreeing with you, you ask me just art, not music for both, then we can make an app.
Could make more for. Good.
Well, later if we do move allowing, then we've got that stock to fill.
Okay, yeah, I'll respect you on that.
Yeah, that's what was the question.
As I said, if we can figure it out, and enable to.
So I entertain my motion to allow these shares.
Who would be the.
Four. Oh, we hold music there.
Same as.
Same as. I'd make the motion to approve.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Graduation requirements.
Hi. So, first off, first one was a no-brainer. In Iowa, we're supposed to offer health, and currently it's on a requirement that has to be for us to offer health. It's elective, but we're not requiring it. And I would like to see our sophomores take a health course. I think it's very important. I used to teach health, so I can speak on that. Physical, mental, and social health is very important, especially to teenagers. Awareness is important as well. And so, we have, Ms. Donald does an excellent job teaching that. I'm not expecting to need anyone, hopefully, but I think it's very important to offer, especially if they're actually or anything like that. The other one I was gonna ask for is character leadership. I think it's important to start our question with the character leadership course. Both of these credits have bumped us to 48, with a total of 56. I think 48's a great number for our district, and I'm trying to get to 50. But I think 48's important. I also think it's important that we create good citizens, not just good students. I think it's very important. And I don't know if you saw the Daily Gate city about a week ago, but we're at the bottom as far as healthiest counties in Iowa. Did you ever read that article? Yeah. It was pretty, it's funny, because we just talked about that article pops up in my, well. I think we remember, I think I'm offering it, but we are the unhealthiest county in Iowa. So, I would like for our sophomores to take a health course, and I think starting with that as a character leadership course would be very valuable. I think Mr. Hall did an excellent job of freshman hall teaching that. It's, it's, we're considering to teach that.
And food and playability skills, like, see, you know, they're talking about, of course, do skills like.
Yeah, and we do have, of course, I'm hoping that kids wanna take too, it's that 12 plus, which all the playability skills and connecting with our power of leaders and accounting. But, yeah, so health, health deals more with the physical, mental, social side of things. It feels more with, and I talked to our science teachers too, a lot of the anatomy and things aren't taught in science, they're not in G S S standards. So that would also help us cover some of those things as well. Shayna could teach it as far, and Mr. Davis also has his health as well. But Shayna really enjoys teaching health course.
It's one semester?
It's one semester. So we would need a couple sections at least. We'd like to start phasing in our freshmen next year, so we're not behind, and we don't need them for a while, but, you know. A couple sections phasing in, we'd start with our class of 2021, if we have freshmen coming in. They wouldn't be the sort of, we'd like to phase them in next year to offset those numbers a little bit. Character leadership would be something they would take. And we're looking at our history right now. See, the state has combined government and civics, number one's standard, if you look at the new draft. Government civics is combined now, and we have our American history, which is two semesters, and we have geography, which is two semesters. What we don't have is world history, or econ. They take world history in sixth grade, and talk to their history department, they don't know world history when they reloop it. We don't have the course, they don't see it, they don't see world history at all. So what we need is if they took world history in sixth grade, geography in seventh, eighth grade, and American history, then you start with world geography. Move them into U S history, which kind of starts right, we found the USA. Take geography, and then end government civics, either seniors, they're looking to vote to be citizens, would be a good inflation in history department.
You said the health wouldn't require an internship. And did you say the same with?
I can't guarantee, two, getting two or three years, but I don't think so. I know we won't get the next two years. But I think as a board at some point, you may want to look at, do you have to be having a full-time P E teacher? Possibly. And us even are having time, maybe move them full, but that's down the road. But I do think we need to offer health, and we would require for them to take it. It's very valuable. I would do everything I can not to have another teacher.
And the character leadership, so would be Mr. Hall?
It'd be Mr. Hall. Our sophomores today is, do we, we don't want government civics, and I think it's too early as freshmen to bubble it up with government civics. So, like I said, we'll do that gap, that world history would be nice to go down there, if it passes in sixth grade. And then a sophomore, Jewish history, geography, and then end government civics.
Any of our school would offer this character class or anything?
Yes, they do. They offer up in Fort Madison. I worked with Todd DiGatti, I visited his classroom. They are very impressed with it, they want to move from a trimester, one trimester, then make a year-long course for some students. But talking with the principal there, who's also my mentor, he's seen great value as far as how students react around school, prior to school.
So you, you're. Setting it out for your model?
There's a few, there's a leader in main curriculum, and then they have their own curriculum up there as well. It's not really expensive at all. He's got a whole list, and I mean, he's willing to work with Mr. Hall really to implement this. But then I thought, if he being helping with Y O T, he can start building his, he was a freshman, just joining the leadership team, a sophomore, junior, and seniors. This is part of that.
Why, you offer a leadership class currently for students, but it's not in there?
Yeah, it's just, it's during the guise of, and it's just for the select students that, I mean, they go through the interview process, but it's not a great thing we give to every kid. I think it's important that they all went to the leadership school. So, again, I think it's not about just the student, we want to develop great citizens and kid, and I think 48's a great number. You know, these are classes that are very doable, and instead are our students hopefully on the right foot, coming to doors.
The econ class doesn't come under the business strand?
Econ comes, we have financial literacy, econ is under history as well. So that would be our other options to add econ. So what we've talked about in the history department is, how can we phase econ into what we already do? Because they said they talked about it in the other history courses.
Yeah, it's a social science.
It is a social science, and we have to.
Let's see that, I'll tell you.
Is that on the scene line? Financial literacy just came out too, our new class, they have standards for that too, now at state level. And it's under the social sciences, so. But we would have that in our natural, like this current, for financial literacy. Which bumps our 2020 to 46 credits. So adding that on, these two would make 2021, 48, with a possible 56. That's an eight-credit bump to a year. Pace is up 12 for years.
What you're talking about would be a little more for national.
For a freshman, yes. It's still being elective for any student to take, but I think we need to start making, require health. So that was our proposal. And I mean, you can think about it if you want, or what you want to do, send a bonus of 48.
Fine, fine.
You're not getting a free, if you're covering up a current stack, if you think you can, per couple of years.
I think we can handle character. I think we can handle character, I don't think we'll need to add anybody for that. Or what we look at is to, you know, do we make some full-time leadership or health or something like that. I don't, I, I, they really consolidate pretty well, so.
Please to offer, Mrs. Edgar might be able to shed that to the world.
Working her sleep, I don't know. Barb? You got?
So sorry, I'm hard hearing too, so. I didn't know what you were talking about.
They're gonna start just, you know, I don't know. You have to pay this, you're gonna do all kinds of stuff.
And the world history with your English class.
There is, there is, but that class is being dropped, that world studies and.
Word studies.
Yeah. But what we're doing is we're, we're adding honor contracts to the regular by comp, so that the students can work on, you know. It's, you know, extended learning projects in those spaces. Because right now, I'm not able to do my job as a tech teacher, because of that cost.
But we used to have it, didn't we?
Yeah, they did have work, yeah. But it was. And then it was Mr. Hall getting to talk that world history with them, because that was just like a sec, you know, a section here and there.
I will add, Parks would work in, in I as well, I added a couple more AP courses. So right now, we currently have AP US history. We would like to possibly add AP biology and that's something Ms. Feiglin's interested in doing. Something that we'd have to pay about five hundred for her to take a class, we could be able to offer AP biology. I think she's the perfect teacher to do it, I think she'd be a lot of kids in there. And AP.
Language.
AP language, foreign.
Which coincides well with the AP history because in AP language, they look at a lot of rhetoric and historical documents. So.
Does it be online or?
No, this is a teacher, a teacher. So there'd be three in-school AP classes offered. So AP Biology, AP Language and Composition, and AP US History.
And Meyer Thomas is interested in teaching the language.
And then, and then there's still kids that could take other things online. It's like this year, we have people taking microeconomics online and AP Lit. And then what happens is I coordinate their testing and I unlock their tests and, you know, tutor if they need, like they have been in charge of now, able to help those students. If they're gonna, if they need AP Calculus, they're gonna need somebody.
All right. I would entertain a motion to accept everything that Ann told us about.
Yeah, thanks.
We're working on that. Make the motion to approve as he presented.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have my asking, how long is yours, I can look. All right. Just to let you know, the TQ committee and TLC committee have met and talking about the revisions for next year and looking at our needs of the TLC for next year. Right now, we have peer mentors who are working with our first or second-year teachers. We would like to propose and moving towards joining the Rick Curry AEA consortium with NTC. Now, if you knew a little bit of background on this, NTC is a new teacher center. They've been in around for over twenty years, nationwide and national. They, who are instructional coaches have been attending their training, our peer coaches have been attending their training right now. And the benefit of the MTC consortium is that right now our peer mentors, they're meeting with our new teachers as they can. Usually it's on a plan and most likely after school or before school, because the day the plans don't always match. As being part of the consortium, we would have, we would be a part of the consortium where we have, there's one, right now they have one full-time induction coach. All they do is work with first and second-year teachers, it's reporting them. And when they're doing that, they're spending one and a half to two and a half hours a week with that new teacher in their classroom, observing, providing feedback, data. And really focusing again on the skills of teaching, the habits of the mind, and preparation, planning, identifying your students, knowing your students. Providing to the standards, would it take the whole process of lesson planning and reflection back? This does cost money to do this, it's a cur, new person right now, we don't have anybody in mind that for next year, we're thinking of new teachers. However, by saying that we are part of this, should we have somebody come in, we would have that. Now, what happens for our current TLC peer mentors, we're not leaving them. We're still keeping them because we always have, you know, usually there's a new person new from the district. Who I can tell you, coming into a new district is sometimes just like being a new teacher, you're relearning and things. So our peer mentors, that role expands to work with people who are new to the district, plus continuing to work with the new teachers. Because again, our new teachers are new to the school buildings, so there's a lot of logistical pieces, the community pieces, like things like that, happens to be right through the building. Let's see, I can tell you also, from prior experience, the program that I had had before where we had nineteen full-release induction coaches. When they removed those coaches, which was just this year, and they brought the coaching program, peer mentor program back into the building. Our second-year teachers, their second year this year, the feedback, cause I asked them, I was, so what's the feedback, what's going on with the data and such? What they found was that the second-year teachers who had had that full-release induction coach for their first year, really missed that one-on-one guiding support that they had with the full-release induction coach. And the other piece is the induction coach are not a part of the building staff. So that was one person that they felt they could really trust and they can, and really have a struggle with this without worrying about it being part of that, in the teacher lounge or in the community and such. Some of the data to bring this around. NTC new teacher center, Grant Wood was a part of it, it was an I-three grant, it was a federal grant innovation grant. Along with Broward County and Chicago. It was a four-year grant in which they monitored and they measured the impact of the new teaching program, full-release, very focused program, to a traditional buddy-type coach. Some of the things that they found for sure were that first-year teachers, their students saw two to three point five months of growth. Those who had the full-release induction coach compared to those that had the buddy system. A second-year teacher, students saw three to five months difference in their growth comparatively. The other pieces that, of data that they found within this, and this was over seven hundred new teachers that were part of the whole study. Fifty-seven percent of those who were part of the NTC program had instructional coach, induction coach, observed and provide feedback, whereas ninety percent did not. And I would say that's all the right in line with the data that I've seen in the years of working in induction coaches programs, where when we have some, that's their job. That's their job. And as we juggle, and we can't always do that. Fifty-five percent said that their coaches talked to them about strengths or needs, about specific students, where eighteen percent with the peer system, it did not always occur. Distress, instructional issues and problems, fifty percent with NTC, twenty percent without. And, you know, the, the professional plan, a continued growth and that focus on, forty-two percent of those who were part of the study with that, that you see have that one-on-one professional growth plan discussion. And that's a big piece of, piece of it, because it is a cycle, it's a learning cycle that they go through. What is our goal, what's standard, are we aligning this too? And then that full process of thinking and problem solving. So what I'm asking, the, the TQ committee agreed, and the TLC committee also agreed, that we're asking to join the Rick Curry AEA consortium. Where we would be a part of many districts who join together to have a peer mentor, induction, full-release induction coach. In this person, from district to district, working solely with new teachers. And they would also meet with the principals in a triad type of thing, so there would be support in multiple layers. And this is an additional layer.
Presently, is this person employed by AEA? Cause we discussed about the million dollars.
Right. Now, for this position, that this position, they say hire a additional, members of the consortium interview. So any one of our teachers could apply, and we would.
Are they just the facility?
The AEA are just the facilitators for it, and I.
That's why, that's why.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the large amount.
No, this is really, this is a, this is a new teacher center program. And Ann Morgan is kind of the advisor for the, the induction coach, who is a part of this, and is part of the AEA. However, her coach, who I have worked with, is with NTC. And I'll tell you, that NTC coach, she holds you to the line in making sure that you are implementing this program with fidelity. And we're looking at the data and we're having conversations with the teachers and we're coaching the teachers and the practices. And I can also say that I read once, I did somewhere, that teachers who were part of the NTC, the full-release induction program. By their second year, were, had the habits of mind, more of a fourth-year teacher than a second-year teacher. Because it will become a part of practice and habits.
It's the way that the AEA picked this up, and they run it, I mean.
Yeah, and my understanding is they do pay a portion of it, but they don't run it, no, it's not like the Journeys program, it's, it's a different.
Okay. I just think they should be doing this, when I see an added cost for AEA.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
And then the other.
And the cost is, if it is five thousand five hundred per person, we would have a new teacher. It is a cost, however, again, you're having a coach with a teacher, one and a half to two and a half, two and a half hours a week, working with a teacher, one-on-one, a new teacher.
Okay, and so one of the things that we don't know of any teachers leading us now, that we're maybe hiring. But everybody talks about, or I shouldn't say everybody, a lot of people talk about next year, after the chapter twenty. And they say it happened in Wisconsin, so on and so forth. If we have ten people leave next year, then we're spending fifty thousand dollars for that?
Again, this is, that would be, if you had ten people, that's what it would be. But again, it's a one-year thing, you should look at it over your, you know, if we get what we wanted out of it.
I'd like a little more time.
I need to be a Debbie Damm. I know someone who went through this and they said it was a huge waste of their time, their coach was not good. And they were mandatory, had to spend that time when they wanted to spend time, when they wanted to for their classroom. But I don't know how, if we get to pick, or we just randomly get whoever.
Um, right now, there is only, there is, was, is this a current coach that they have this year, or that's not?
No, no, it's not this year, it was probably two years ago.
Okay, now, the coach they have this year is, you know, this is the first year for Rick Curry has this consortium.
So there's one?
There's one.
How many districts?
There's how many districts involved, because it's starting, going. And Grant, Grantwood has this, they're using consortium model with the districts as well. And it's just, I'm reading it as an optional support. A way to provide for your support.
And they done a five, seven, four, have identified five of the.
That's what this, this.
But this is the five.
That was a four-year, nine million dollar per grant per year, grant from the federal grant of the study. It was with Broward County, Florida, Chicago. And Grantwood was the more rural aspect of the study as well.
I appreciate you being progressive and bringing this stuff to us, but with the cost applied, and I think AEA should be covering that, or we just need a little.
And I will pass on. I will take that forward to them. Thank you, I would take that one to the group. Thank you.
So we all agree on that, or do we want to make a motion?
I don't know much detail you were aware of, just this evening. Budget reduction plan is sitting in front of you. Starts off with reducing high school old debt, family consumer science, reducing part-time media clerk. Media clerk, part-time in high school. High school plan is our position from eight to seven hours, reduces the freshman football coach, girls' freshman basketball coach, reduces seventh-grade girls' basketball assistant coach. Eighth-grade girls' basketball assistant coach, middle school assistant wrestling, high school volleyball assistant, high school girls' track assistant. Reduces high school newspaper stipend, eliminates administrative cell phones, with extra individual appliances in rooms. Reduction of library budget, reduction of show card travel budget, reduction of two summer crew positions, and eliminates temperatures in the buildings. So those are the things we have listed there. About a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, give or take. The positions we're anticipating adding are increasing high school nurses to seven hours, adding a high school boys' swim coach, and the halftime music position in the middle school. So those are the things that, my understanding, Brian's committee's mentioned multiple times about it as well.
And the net effect of all of those would be about a hundred thousand five hundred impacts.
So when you say we've mentioned a few times on that, I think we've mentioned several times in, in the administrators, in your admin meetings of that, several. It's been going on. Yeah, we, we couple of months at least.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to accept it as is.
So.
Is there any discussion?
Very, most fascinating, personally, my opinion, kind of, being a part of the decision, which I think is really, very reasonable.
Did she need a copy for you?
Yeah, I put, I put it over there when Mars.
I think I'm a little more at bringing somebody's position. Like, for example, the coaching positions.
Talked about trying to set some sort of guidelines, I guess would be a good ways to say that, these are things I know that Jason, which the coaches about, talk about.
I do think that there's a huge influx of kids that usually seems, I think it probably would be recommended to add a position back.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Because the numbers have gone down.
The numbers have gone down at home, but it's.
Couple areas are starting to come back up now, so that's, that's good. So hopefully we can continue that, and we can bring those positions back, you know.
I think it's physically responsible of us to do this.
I'm just wondering, as far as appliances and things, I mean, are we gonna work to try to find a, a number that, you know, teachers wanna have fridge or something that they can? You know, I'm just curious how I say this to my staff.
I just been researching that.
Okay.
I am.
So we're working on it.
Figures.
Okay. Great.
So we'll have some leads.
Okay, thanks.
You can, you can police that while you're policing the parking lot.
I'll take the parking lot.
It's just some reason why I, is it there? I just wanted to. I would say I'm the one responsible for that, because I felt like if you, you said they can only do so many trips. I think it has a lot to do with how much money they save. They're not going to Wisconsin, but they're going to, um, Cheatham, so. I, I like it that way, but I like seeing.
I think.
This way, if we give them a dollar figure, the budget, then the director can choose wherever they wanna go. And if they can, yeah, if they can hit six trips and that money, they can, if they can only do three, they can do three.
Is that based off what we spent this year, or how did you guys get to that?
I think it was based off.
Okay. Okay.
But we have to come up with a figure, so we have to come up with that.
I'm just curious, if we're looking for a new one, you know, if that decision made, how I can communicate that?
Right.
Okay.
Speaking of that, I mean, how do you want the position, the new position advertised?
Yeah, if we accept this, I would like the position advertised as a nine-twelve vocal music. I don't know if you put showpart, are there two of us just vocal music?
We have three interviewees next week.
Okay, but they're not, they don't, they.
They're well aware of the position. And then a couple are very highly qualified that I didn't want to lose them. There's a couple we got that are really highly qualified that I wanted to at least take the gap. So a few other ones I called, had gotten jobs, and I got a little scared, so. So we've got interviews this week, next Thursday.
So if we change, though, I mean, I don't know if we're gonna repost it or.
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, we can look at that for sure.
But maybe if you get good.
I have not had any new applicants in the last week. And I did call, followed up with one of Nick's friends and designers, so that was one. He gave me the name and I called him, so.
But you don't know what you'll get if it's posted nine-twelve, you might get more people too.
Might, but there's two on here that if we can get, would be really good for us.
Right. But that could, but who does change the posting? No, we can change reposting tomorrow if we want, to nine-twelve.
We'll have a couple committees, and we'll see how these, these three turn out, and then, yeah.
Yeah, because if you've got, there's no sense in reposting.
I'm getting some phone calls, Mr. Dur.
I got a few emails too. And what we did was, we added qualification to the bottom, and I got a good response back on that was, you know, they said, well, I was looking at this from outside view, doesn't really speak showpart, so we added a qualification to the bottom. And it's not to say I'm not going to still be checking it. We want to post it that way and throw it out there until we, the board, you know, decides what it's going to be, and then we can post it and advertise however we want.
I would like to change the posting, even if you find somebody coming next week, then fine.
Yeah.
We can do that tomorrow. Okay.
But then how long does it have to go for?
Oh, well, I mean, we are, this week is done.
Oh, I think Russ is asking if we have to internalize it.
I'm wanting to repost, re-advertise, get them in, and then go through the process again?
If we find someone, great, fine.
How about we see how Thursday goes, and then if we're not happy, we throw that net back out.
Repost.
I like that repost is enough.
Internally?
No, I, I don't care. Right now, it's.
My only question is, do you have to wait ten days?
You were told we could just upload, whether they were talking to you, I understood you said we can post it. Change the posting, yeah. But we have to wait till today.
You have to wait till night, and make sure it's okay, posted outside. I want to know if they just speak to you.
My intention is to have, to have this position. But those people you're interviewing now, they know it's not a seven twelve.
Yep, and we got a couple that really, we don't want to wait on them.
Yeah, no, I heard that.
Invite it.
You haven't talked to the A E A. Not by changing it, yeah. All right, any more discussion on this list? All in favor? Say aye. Any votes? Okay, on the push now. On the short list, I entertain a motion to accept the personnel list. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. One motion to.